Are we ready to go? Everybody all set? All right. We're still waiting on Mr. Bird. Mr. Peters will not be joining us this evening, but I would like to get started with the City Council's study session for March 24, 2021. We'll start with the public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. We do have a couple of ecomments. We've set up a website address, excuse me, an email address, publiccomment@cityofholland.com for those folks who may want to provide us comments and not have to come to city council to do that, so we encourage people to send those emails. We did receive two there from that. I just want to acknowledge that those are out there. We actually received those into the record at our regular meetings, but we did receive two comments in regard to North Downtown, which we're going to be talking about this evening. Next item on the agenda, review, or excuse me, review the vision for the North Downtown project, Sixth Street, Window on the Waterfront and College Avenue. Mr. Van Beeck, and welcome, Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is good to be back together with you again tonight, and you'll see we're experimenting something we, you know, we can't, we're not in the training room yet, but actually, on this first item, you're actually going to have all eight of these people are going to make, be part of the presentation, and no one wants to see me spray bottle that often, right? But we also thought it was nice to just kind of, this is as close as we can get to sitting around a table and having a discussion, so we'll see how that goes and we'll kind of replicate that. I can definitively say to you that staff is really excited about making presentations to you tonight. We have two topics that I know coming out of your advance that you were really interested in getting updates on, and we're really interested in giving you those updates. And I think it kind of highlights that I'm going to get out of the way quickly, and you're probably saying, yeah, you're still talking, Keith, but really, I want to get out of the way quickly because it highlights that staff is working on things and moving things forward all the time. You've heard the analogy that Matt Vindeikin used, came up with, and now I use all the time about the pool balls on the pool table, and you're moving them down to the end of the table and you don't know exactly which one's going to fall in first. But especially with North Downtown, we're going to talk about that tonight. The intent of tonight is first that Nick and Haryi are going to present, and it made a ton of sense for them to do that presentation as consultants because they were so involved with the Waterfront Holland process and know the history and the context and the vision. So they're going to talk about that vision that we've had for Downtown and specifically North Downtown and Window on the Waterfront for decades, with the intention of really just reminding and confirming that vision. And then staff is going to give you a collection of updates on things that we've been moving forward, those pool balls to the end of the table, working on things that fall underneath that vision. Now, we had some public comments, and I've had some other inquiries. Really, there's only one thing from all the staff presentations that's in the near term of something that we're thinking we're going to bring to you to happen, and that's something that I've given you updates on a few times, and that's the outdoor discovery nature-based playscape. So Andy will give you more information on that, and we think that that's going to come before you probably, you know, in the next month or two. Everything else that we're going to talk about, though, is not near term. It's probably at least a couple of years out. It has mult, you know, it would all be items that would come back before you with detailed, detailed plans and action, and they're all things that in the process are part of a public, you know, input and consideration process, too. But Haryi will talk about, and there's a great visual that we use about how framework thinking and kind of how we've done things in Holland historically, and that it's, you have a vision, and then there's this iterative process, and I'm going to go like this because you'll recognize the graphic when she sees it, that moves us towards implementation. And we're moving those pool balls closer and closer to the end now. And I will say that when it comes to North Downtown, we're closer to the implementation phase than we are to the visioning phase. So hopefully that just gives you a little context, and for those who are listening, when we talk about some of these things, the decision hasn't been made, the detailed design isn't done, the time for public input hasn't passed, and certainly, final action by council is still needed. But I think it's really important also to give you an update on where we are and fit it into the context of that larger vision. So with that, I'll promise, I said I was going to get out of the way, so I'm going to get out of the way, and we're going to start with Haryi and Nick. And just so you know, just with COVID and everything, they're going to come up with creative ways to tell Matt Vindeikin how to advance to the next slide all through the night, so we'll maybe have a little fun with that also.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Nick and I are really thrilled and glad to be here with you in person today, together with you and to provide you that overview of North Downtown vision. In some ways, it feels like this is a touch point again since Waterfront Holland back in January of 2020, largely because, as you see here, North Downtown is one of those districts encompassing the Waterfront Holland visioning. And yet, at the same time, the purpose today is to provide you more of that context, as Keith mentioned, behind really North Downtown that ties it back to the greater downtown vision. And a couple of points that we want to point out before we dive into the presentation proper, and as you can see here, and maybe Matt can circle it, too, is that North Downtown is one of those pearls on the necklace, right? It's one of those beads and pearls that really represent a district, but it is not a standalone district. It is one of many parts in Downtown. It is part of Waterfront Downtown, it is North Downtown, there is also Central Downtown and East Downtown. All parts of Downtown need to work together as a unified whole, as a single whole, and they need to have those unifying elements to bring them together. And as you can see, there is that greater whole, there is an underlying system of linkages, whether it's pedestrian networks, whether it's roads, for instance, or whether it's the greenways, and there is an important synergy at play here that we cannot disregard. This body that we call Downtown is a unit. There are many parts to Downtown, and yet, they also form a single body. The second point that we want to highlight before we dive into the presentation proper is that this Downtown vision, in particular, North Downtown, isn't just a piece coming out from the 2018 Waterfront Holland visioning. It has been in the works for more than 30 years, from the time that I was just in first grade, for instance. That's how long this has been. This is a multi-generational effort for this community, and it is one that is not done. It is still in process, but as Keith said, we're getting closer to the implementation. And so let's keep in mind that this is a long-term vision that will outlast many of us for multiple generations. So moving on to the next page, Matt, which is where the city has come from, and that's kind of where we want to start in the first part of the presentation. The second part is where we want to show you where the city is going in terms of that Downtown vision. And third, as we hand it off to staff, is how they will be bringing this vision into reality. So on to the next page in terms of Keith's really nice tee-up to this framework thinking diagram and approach, and it really is one that was the basis of the two elements of the Downtown vision that you see on the bottom of the page. The connectivity diagram, as well as the vision statement, both authored by Bill Johnson as well as Gordon Van Wieland. But we want to spend some time really on this framework thinking approach, largely because it is iterative, as you can see, there are multiple circles, many loops, it is continuous, it is not a broken process. It starts by really understanding the need, and for Downtown, back in the 1980s, it was the renewal of Downtown as the model was being developed on US 31. That need might have changed over time, but that need spawned a big, bold vision for the Main Street, for the historic Main Street of the city of Holland. That need catalyzed a clear vision. It was grounded in due diligence, in thorough analysis. It spawned multiple exploratory concepts that have then led to some preferred plans for different districts, for different parts of Downtown. It has also led to, as you can see for this part of North Downtown, some pieces that are beginning to move into the implementation process. It is an iterative process that is built on listening, on engagement, on input, as you can see with some of those arrows coming off from the bottom, but what's clear is this, is that once the vision is cast and blue, that vision is advanced, is sharpened, and is sustained over time across many generations and across many different boards of leadership, both from the public as well as the private sector. Now, let's spend a little bit of time on that Downtown vision from 1990 that continues to live on today, and we believe will continue to live beyond even our lifetimes, which is that of the diagram of connectivity. It is about Downtown connectivity, not just within Downtown. It is about connecting Downtown to the central city, to the neighborhoods, connecting Downtown to the college, to the seminary, connecting Downtown to the surrounding townships, connecting Downtown to the waterfront and to the greenways. That little vision statement has constantly been the North Star. It is one that describes the characteristics and the qualities that we seek as a community. And one point to note is, while this was authored by two distinguished gentlemen, they represent a collaborative approach. They listened to the community leaders, both from the public and private sector of the time, to nonprofit leaders, as well as to their residents, to be able to distill and crystallize into these two fundamental elements that have been the cornerstone of Holland's Downtown. What also enabled that vision is just a five bullet point list that you see there, which are the commonly held values of what defines Holland culture, toward community, stewardship, and development. These are small, five bullet points, but they have so much meaning in them. And the first is that of the collaboration. We've spoken about the public-private nonprofit partnership. Some of that also entails that strategic entrepreneurship that is very much in the DNA of the economic engine and the regional kind of industries of West Michigan. That also includes the creative philanthropy and the generosity of the many families who have been an anchor in this community. It also speaks to the patient capital that they see, that we all collectively see from the public as well as the private sector. A second commonly held value that is distinctive to Holland is that of grounding this stewardship in a process, and the key word here is the process, which speaks to that framework thinking process. It is the process and not the outcome that we're looking for. A process that is robust will yield a robust outcome, and it is one that looks to community leadership, to city council like you, to city leadership from staff, from the team, to private sector leadership, nonprofit leadership, school board leadership, community leadership, and all of you to embrace, to build on that vision, to sharpen it from time to time, to keep it fresh in front of you so that you don't lose sight of it, and at the same time to foster that dialogue amongst yourselves, to then take those incremental steps when the time is right to be effective, to be catalytic, so that the projects can benefit the greater good and be aligned with this broader Downtown vision. Now, the third point there is that the process is also centered on the vision, and why it needs to be centered on a vision is important because a vision brings clarity, which is why we chose the word crystallize. To crystallize is to have clarity, and we need to have that clear North Star as a direction. It helps to guide processes as well as decision-making, sometimes when you're down in the weeds, and then you need to zoom back out and to ask yourself, are we aligned with this broader vision? And that is the purpose of the vision, to seek inspiration, to encourage and understand broad community expectations, encourage and to understand broad community aspirations, to build trust in the process, to refresh and to keep that vision in mind, and to know that this is a long-term vision, but in that long-term decision, long-term vision, there's also short-term decision-making to be done, and short-term decisions that would require wisdom. The vision itself is also a way to identify and to understand Holland's DNA, and in this case, we're not just talking about the physical DNA of Holland, we're also talking about the cultural and the elusive qualities of this DNA. It speaks to these five qualities of the values of how things work and values that we believe will continue to operate into the future generations. The fourth piece is that of the common values that hold us all together, and these are values that are not defined by faith, not necessarily defined by background, but values of seeking common ground, of listening, as demonstrated in any process that has a public component, of valuing other perspectives, of building on the historical context and what is local, while remaining open to new ideas, to newcomers, and also fresh, contemporary, positive expressions in the built fabric. It's also about being welcoming as well as accessible to everyone, that hallmark of hospitality that is so unique to this West Michigan community. And of course, in terms of the reality, it's the first things first approach that I think Keith and his team will unpack tonight, it's that commonly held prudence, it's about ensuring that key sites are in friendly hands, and by that, we actually mean developers, property owners, who actually understand the Holland way, the Holland culture, and understand that this is the bigger vision that we're all looking towards. And of course, as you will hear tonight, it's about getting things done and making things happen. So on the next page, you'll see, all right, maybe we need a little timer, is that in this timeline, we have on the bottom really just the various Downtown strategic plan, this is one from 2007, kind of a limited edition, and we just want to show you that in fact, this is a process that has been happening for the last 30 over years, and that there have been three strategic plans just for Downtown alone, with a mini-update through Waterfront Holland in 2018. And then on the top half of that timeline in orange, you actually see parallel studies that have been undertaken specific really to the North Downtown area, whether it is starting with the waterfront area center study of 1988, all the way to some of the more recent Sixth Street studies. Through these different efforts, the Downtown vision has been revised, it has been updated, it has also been confirmed several times. And so with that, it leads us to where the city is going in terms of the vision. And on the next page, we come back again to this diagram that was updated in Waterfront Holland. And here, as you will see, if we were to pay attention to that piece that has North Downtown, it really is the intersection between the urban and the natural, the green fingers meeting the green, meeting the urban fabric of Downtown. It is here where North Downtown presents an opportunity for the city to really weave a new tapestry in that new identity center. And if we were to unpack that a little bit more and to give it more flesh, which is on the next page, is that extension of that connectivity here that happens largely on Sixth Street. Of all the streets, it really is Sixth Street as that key east-west connector, but also key north-south connector. It is where framed by college and Columbia, Sixth Street now becomes, first of all, that north face to the vibrant urban Downtown center, and then also where the green, the green natural fabric of the Maquette Tower system begins to pick up. As you see, those arrows extending from Sixth Street, it is extending with open arms, and intentionally so, to begin to reflect the expanse of this rich ecological environment. One of the reasons why, in the next page, we wanted to zoom out again and to show you some of the context, is that since this community was founded, Holland has always had a rich environmental, kind of ecological, natural waterfront in the Maquette Tower system. And of all the lake shore communities here in West Michigan, Holland is the only community that has a Downtown, that has that vast natural waterfront. Most other lake shore communities have your public waterfronts, your recreational waterfronts, your industrial waterfronts, your private residential waterfronts, but no other community on this part of the state has this expanse of that natural ecological-rich wetland. A natural waterfront really to be celebrated, to be honored, to be preserved, as well as to be connected back to Downtown as part of the locational advantage of Holland, and to set it apart from the other Downtowns on the west side of Michigan. This also speaks to the importance of Sixth Street and why it then becomes the interface between the urban as well as the natural. Now, if one of what, we likely unpack as well some of the aspirations that are unique to North Downtown since the beginning, and on the next page, are two very simple diagrams, one which is a plan view and another which is a perspective view. And as early as 2007, those aspirations and vision have been cast, really building on kind of that locational asset and natural asset, that this is a place that has a rich natural, environmental, horticultural heritage that's also tied to the local culture. It's also in close proximity to Windmill Island Gardens, one that allows this part of North Downtown to be a place of beauty, of flowers, of gardens, and walkways, a place that through Sixth Street transitions from Downtown to the natural Maquette Tower system. It is also, as intended by some of the bubbles that you see on the plan view, to be a welcoming center to residents and visitors alike, the extension of that hospitality here in Holland, to be a destination-oriented community site and a place with amenities and programming that continue the storytelling of Holland's history, its strengths, as well as its accomplishments, pretty much what has been done today at Window on the Waterfront, but really now pushing it up and taking it up a notch to the next level. Now, both the plan and perspective highlight something in common, which is that the south side of Sixth Street is really the end of that urban fabric, and on the north, as you can see, some of that street wall is peeled away, revealing really a substantive portion of green, that green finger that meets Sixth Street. And this is where it opens up to preservation of the green space, of views to the natural waterfront and beyond, and Window on the Front, Window on the Waterfront is just a special gem to the community. It is a beloved place of respite, of recreation, of beauty. It is that beloved gem to be honored, to be protected, and to be enhanced. And on the next page, we see really just an array of all the exploratory concepts, pretty much part of that framework thinking process, and through it all, on the next page, we have distilled some of those common North Downtown intentions that we want to highlight to you today. Across all these different studies, these are the common elements to pay attention to. First, a pair of blue arrows that indicate whether it's through pedestrian linkages, the north-south connection between the urban core as well as the natural system, the harmony of the urban and natural uses, for instance, in this case, that crosses from Eighth Street, across the parking deck, to Sixth Street and that mid-block connector, and then opening up with wide arms embracing the natural system. The second piece is that of the College Avenue potential extension, and this is one where College Avenue now has the opportunity to activate some potential development to the west of it. The third piece is that of the green, and as you might see, where it meets Sixth Street, it is pretty much centered on the block. The width of that green is meant to be optimal. Too narrow, and then we lose the opportunity for substantive horticultural programming. Too narrow, and we lose that opportunity to embrace that visual kind of funneling out to the green. Now, if it is too wide, for instance, the journey back to Downtown will lose focus. The appropriate width itself will draw the direction as well as the visual focus back to Downtown centered on that block itself. And last but not least, is this idea that the areas shaded white, south of Sixth Street, and the areas in white that's west of College, those are intended to be private development triggered by this green heart in Holland's Downtown. It is a heart that is pretty much like Central Park in Manhattan, for instance. The green, in this case, is used to trigger the public-private partnership in friendly hands and to continue this vision of North Downtown that is for the greater good of the community. In the subsequent pages, we'll see some of the recent master planning efforts, both at the city level as well as the Parks and Recreation, by the Parks and Recreation Department, which continues to affirm the vision, where North Downtown is compatible with the rest of Downtown, where there is a need to balance and thoughtfully balance really just the preservation of the green as well as the mixed-use development that could be triggered, to be able to leverage the assets of the Maquette Tower Greenway, and then also identifying that this is that community destination for recreation programming that will be taken on largely by the Parks and Recreation Committee. In addition to these master plans, the next page also highlights some of the catalyst sites that were identified by the Property Review Committee. These are substantial sites that are largely public and city-owned. They could support some of those exploratory concepts in Waterfront Holland, but in these concepts, I think what has been clear is that there are ways in which the public investment can support appropriate private development outside of the green public space, outside of this green heart, and that this beloved green space in the community is one because being designated waterfront property as well as park property comes with it some important legal and procedural considerations. And in particular, we'd like to highlight to you that it would require a three-fifth vote of the people for any publicly designated waterfront or park site to be sold by the city. That is a big ask, and it is one that reflects the inherent value of such sites in the public good. So last but not least, how is the city getting there and how is the city realizing this Downtown vision? Where we left off with Waterfront Holland was some of these first things first that commonly held prudence approach, the idea really that there can be some capital improvements on Sixth Street, the study of College Avenue and its extension, and of course, the new identity center, whether it's called Uptown, whether it's called North Downtown, and of course, working hand in hand with the city's planning department is the idea, and is this new document that will be coming before you, the Proposed Unified Development Ordinance that through its zoning continues to affirm that this is a space for public green, for public purposes, that could be surrounded and supported by other private developments. And so as we bring our presentation to an end, it really is one where we want to highlight that there are some joint development opportunities that have been revealed through 30 years' worth of exploration, of visioning, a lot of continued partnership between the public as well as the private developers, and of course, that this is now the proper time, that the timing of these ideas for connectivity, for incremental steps to be taken, is now showing, and for some important groundwork to be laid. And so it is with this that we now turn it back to the city team, who will be revealing how they will making, how they will be making these things happen, what are some of those first steps that they are taking and how they're getting things done. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Haryi and Nick in support. So again, I know we're in the dias setting, but I want this to be a conversation, so probably, especially if there's any, like, you don't have to wait till the end, but, so like every time there's a break and a new speaker, if there's questions or anything, feel free, but we also definitely have time at the end, when you've kind of heard everything, we'll certainly circle back now. Our intent now is that we're going to hand it off to Ryan, because Ryan, you know, is really getting going in his role of economic development and sustainability, and I think he's had some messages that he talked to you about way back before he was contracting with the city, and it really picks up on the stage of transferring and kind of doing those first things first, so, thanks, Ryan.
Scott, did you have questions? I just wanted, I saw you grab your microphone there. Okay. Anyone else have questions at this point for Haryi and Nick?
We do, I think, but some of them will probably be answered, too, so we'll just let it roll.
Okay. And I think you had your mic on. I just want to also, Matt wanted me to make sure I reminded everybody, make sure you have your mics on when you're speaking, so, because we're live streaming this, and if it's not, if your mic's not on, people at home can't hear you. So, Ryan, good to see you.
Thank you. Yeah, glad to be back in person. So all of you will probably remember a couple of years ago, when we were talking about the economic development policy, we talked about four primary tools that the city has, frankly, that any municipality has to do economic We talked about four primary tools that the city has, frankly, that any municipality has to do economic development. Um, and we, there are a lot of tools, but we've kind of distilled those down into four buckets, um, which are plan, zone, invest, abate. Um, and as you're well aware, a lot of planning has been done for North Downtown. Um, as Mark will talk about, the zoning ordinance is is beginning to wrap up. Um, and those zoning provisions for North Downtown are in place. Um, and so the next one, uh, on the list is invest, is, uh, what are the ways that the city can begin to invest to tee up economic development over the long term? Uh, go ahead, next slide. Oh, uh, yeah, there we go. So, um, this is a diagram, hopefully on your screens, you can actually see what those words say because I can't see them from here. Um, but this is actually from a consulting firm called Projects for Public Spaces. Um, they do a lot of public space investment all over the country. Um, and the gist is that when you invest in public infrastructure, when you invest in the things that make places enjoyable, um, those things reap economic returns. Those investments generate more private investment. Um, and so what I want to do in just a couple of slides for a couple of minutes is is walk you through how that's happening today in the city of Holland. Um, and then tee up the next level conversation for how that could continue to happen in the North Downtown neighborhood. Next slide. So as you're well aware, uh, City of Holland has one of the most dynamic downtown infrastructure streetscapes, uh, in the state of Michigan. I I think probably in the country. The amount of investment that has gone into the downtown streetscape is really extraordinary. Um, and so consider this to be A-plus level infrastructure. And so what I'm not advocating for is that every street in the city have this level of infrastructure. But know that you all have really set the bar. Uh, and all of your predecessors and the forefathers have set the bar for what does it look like to really invest in city infrastructure? And let's talk about for a second what that means in terms of economic value. Next slide. So, um, broadly, what we're talking about here is, um, when we combine people and place, we get prosperity. Uh, and so when when we make these investments in places, they attract people. Um, people invest not only in businesses, but also in homes, um, in shops and in restaurants and in retail. Um, and those two things combined are what create the prosperity. So what we want to be thinking about is how do we create places that attract those people of all income levels, uh, of all types, um, from all walks of life, we want to think about how do we create places that will be dynamic and vibrant and generate that prosperity? So in the city of Holland, the, both of these, uh, properties, and and you've seen this, uh, slide before, um, both of these properties are in the city of Holland. Um, the one on the left is, uh, pretty small. It's about forty feet wide. The one on the right is about two hundred and ten feet wide. Um, and they each produce taxable value for the city of Holland. Um, the one on the left produces about sixty-seven dollars per square foot of land area. The one on the right produces just under six dollars per square foot of land area. Um, probably the one on the right has a lot more traffic going in and out of it on a daily basis. They're probably doing higher sales volumes in the one on the right. And yet, the one on the left is producing significantly more taxable value for you on an annual basis. Next slide. So now, when we look at, what is that revenue look like on a per lineal foot of infrastructure? Um, so the one on the left is forty feet on public road, which means it has forty feet of infrastructure. Forty feet of sidewalk, forty feet of curb and gutter, forty feet of road surface. Um, obviously, the investment that you've put into the infrastructure here is much greater than the investment that you've put in on the right. But it's generating five-fold the revenue on a per lineal foot basis as compared to the one on the right. Next slide. So now what we get to do is think about a different kind of infrastructure, but infrastructure nonetheless. Uh, when we're thinking about North Downtown, what we're thinking about is, uh, what is the the heart, as Hari called it, that really defines the public space around which private investors will make their investments? So what are the things that will really draw those investments, regardless of whether it's office or residential or hotel? What are the things that drive those investments? Um, and Hari really, uh, hit on all of those things. It's access to the waterfront, it's green space, it's dynamic kind of public uses. All of those things will drive more investment on the surrounding privately owned properties. Um, and so the question becomes, what are the ways in which the community wants to make investments? Um, in what order do you want to make them? Um, and what kind of private investment do you want to catalyze as a result? So I think I'll hand it off.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'll I'll echo what everybody else said. It's great to be here tonight. I'm really happy to see everybody in person. Um, so I get to talk about some of that green stuff that Ryan was just mentioning. Um, Window on the Waterfront, here's a, here's a slide. Man, I don't know when it was taken, but it was many decades ago. Yeah. So you can see at the top part of the picture where it's now filled in with dredge, there's actually some water where Window on the Waterfront was or is. It's kind of a cool perspective and that's what it looks like today. Just recently taken picture. Vast difference. It's pretty cool to see that.
Sorry. So, yeah. Again, we're all happy to be here. Everybody's, we're all seeing smiling faces not through Zoom. We, we know what kind of pants, you know, our city manager is wearing, so that's a good thing. But, yeah, we, so we're all excited about this area, right? I mean, there's, there's no question. We've actually had some discussions already with some of the neighboring, uh, private property owners. Uh, a group of us, uh, spoke to all the folks that have property on Sixth Street and a few of the properties up to the north and west of that. And they're all very excited about the things that we're going to be doing in that area. Um, one of the things I think everyone is aware of is there is an existing agreement on a piece of property that the city has with, the city currently owns, uh, with a private property. And we're a private entity and it's just a matter of, um, when that agreement gets executed, that property will transfer to that private party. So we want to make sure everybody understood that.
I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, where where is that, Matt?
More specific with that, Matt. It's the soccer.
Yeah, so it's currently one of Andy's smaller, because it's not a regulation-sized field, I don't believe, but it's a small soccer field. If you know where the peaking station is down there, so the the one with all the arborvitae that the deer always eat. Uh, if you extended the roadway to the north, there's a little piece of property that will remain in in the cit, with the city and then everything further than to the west. So there's a condo development that's there. I forget the name of the the condo downtown place. You can see it on the the small photograph there. But it's, it's the majority of that, that piece of property that sits between where the road would extend and where that downtown place.
Yeah, and and for council members, if you lean forward, at least when I did, and you get a slightly different angle on the screen, I think the lines are actually there on the photo as well.
Yeah, the the property lines.
Yeah, the property lines are there.
Property lines, yeah.
So, excuse me, just so I can understand that, there's a, there's an agreement to sell this to?
Do you want to take this along with you?
Yeah, this is kind of news to me, so.
Yeah, so, uh, so this goes back a long ways, but I I'll describe it roughly. This is, I'm sure Ron would say that's not the right legal term, Keith, but he's not here, so. It's almost like a right of first refusal on steroids. So basically, there were a whole series of land swaps, if you would, dating back to really kind of moving downtown in the direction that it is today, where there was, okay, this parcel goes to you and this parcel goes to the city and there were movements. And this is the last parcel part of all of that. And it still has that legal agreement over top of it where basically it is still owned. And as you can tell, Andy still has use of that property. But at any time that, um, it's ready for development or the, um, the owner that has that that super right to it, um, they have the ability then to take that and then develop it.
So this one isn't subject to that same, uh, public vote requirement?
Correct.
Is this before us, Mike?
Yeah, Dave, this was back in, I believe, the mid-eighties. So was that before Mike?
That was before, that was pre-Mike, yes.
Well, that's, that's like middle ages. Okay, well, that's interesting. I had no idea.
Yeah, I I was not aware of this. I've got a, I've got a couple of questions because, you know, I deal with rights of first refusal on steroids frequently. That is, that is a term of art.
That is a legal term. Excellent, excellent.
The way we learned it in law school, sure. So the, 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 the private property developer, whomever it is that has that right, they have the ability to be able to trigger that on their own so that that, at any point, they could say, they could walk in tomorrow and say, we want to, we want to, uh, exercise our right, our, our right of first refusal. And there isn't anything the city could do to to prevent that, as far as you know anyway, based on the fact? I know Ron's not here and we don't have the agreement in front of us, but is that the understanding that they, they can trigger that on their own?
That is generally, generally the correct, um, understanding, yes.
Okay.
The thing that is that, um, Matt will describe a little bit more moving forward to in his presentation is that recall that that area and then as you get further both north, really north, a little bit east, but primarily west, is that this is, remember in that earlier picture where there was the, the dredge disposal facility? And remember, the dredge disposal facility actually is on top of the old city dump. So really, you, you, really, you can't separate that, I love it, thanks, Mayor for supporting me, the right of first refusal on steroids. You really can't separate that historic reality out of also that there's a lot of remediation and environmental understanding um, work that would need to be done before, um, you could go in and do any type of development in that area.
And I, and I think just for, I want to, Matt, could you go back to the old photo? I think the piece that we're talking about here, is it the piece that's, that looks like it has the semi-tractor trailers on it? Am I picturing? No, it's, it's this way of it. It's the, it's the dark part there. Yeah, because the peaker unit is still there. Right, okay. Yep, I was blocked too far. That's where the peaker is, right? Yep. So it is, it's the dark space there, almost right in the center of the photo, or most of that dark space. Oh, you have to have your microphone on.
My mouth is big enough. It almost looks like that was after one of the wildfires or one of the, uh, was that before that was planted?
Oh, yeah. This is, this is thirty years ago. Sorry, this is more than thirty years ago.
This picture?
Yeah, this particular one.
Yeah, this, this goes back well before the mid-eighties because I used to go down, when I was a HOPE student in the late eighties, we would go down to Window on the Waterfront and it did not look like this at that point.
The old power plant is gone. That's why I was trying to gauge the time, the Fifth Street, what we called Fifth Street at that time, prior to the Hastings Avenue Service Center. It's gone, which was just to the east of the peaking, peaking unit there.
So could you show the next slide again? Thanks. So where does the city property start? Oh, that is, so there's that little, that chunk that's west of College or central maybe.
Yeah, Matt, you want?
The piece beyond that, is that, is that, is this all privately owned up to?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's about, I'd hate to give you numbers, but it's about fifty, it's between fifty and a hundred feet to the west.
Yeah, okay.
Everything from the roadway as it would extend
Yeah.
to fifty to a hundred feet and we could have to get a survey out to show you exactly what it is.
And I'm talking north, actually.
Oh, the city property to the north?
Yeah.
So there's a corner, if you look on that map, kind of.
I see it. I can see it here.
Yeah, Quincy's saying that there are a couple, there are a couple of trees that, you can see them in this photo. Am I seeing that, what you're talking about there, Quincy?
Yeah, there's a corner where two brush lines meet at about a ninety-degree angle. Uh, I believe everything north and
East.
west of that corner, until you get up to where the parking lot is and they come on the backside north of WHTC.
Yeah.
Basically, all that piece is all privately held.
Okay.
So that makes, did I answer the question?
So it's like, what's mode here is city property?
Yeah, correct.
And now is probably as good a time as any. I think we were gonna try to mention this also too, because this, this is no decisions, right, but like how our minds think of like, okay, let's take the vision, those elements that Hari talked about and dream a little bit and get elements in place. And that's what staff does sometimes, right? It's like, all right, let's work some of these things out. So another way to al- almost overly simplistically answer your question, Lynn, is imagine college extended and east is the city and west is private. And the only kind of disclaimer there is that for the first parcel north of Sixth, there's kind of an additional area of of city kind of easement or city property there. And we think that's really cool and really beneficial because a lot of the historic visions and plans that we've had is that if you would extend college as a road or a walkway or anything, that that is a really important corner. And that even though it was identified as a development zone, the development zone there is not, it, it wasn't ever intended as being private development. It was public investment development. And we really have some kind of cool ideas that we're excited to share with you, again, ideas, not plans, that if you could put something right on that corner, you'd actually want it to be where if you were deeper into downtown and you looked up College, you wouldn't just continue to see the road extending, but you would see something that we're putting as far as a new public investment right there. So it would invite you down there. You would say, hey, there's something kind of cool down there. Let's go check that out. So the setup of the land in the parcel lines that are there really invite, cry out that that's what we try to do.
So, yeah, just to piggyback a little bit on that is, you know, we've talked a long time about the kind of the march to the waterfront being westward. And we were out looking at this the other day and it's a kind of an interesting thing. So I ran this, this afternoon, just ran out there, physically ran and stopped on Eighth Street. And if you look directly north from Eighth Street, that public right-of-way goes all the way to the water. And as I transitioned from, you know, being able to, and it's blocked, the, the view of the water right now is blocked by trees. But as I envisioned that kind of the progression from someone walking downtown to seeing this beautiful feature that's attracting us to what's right there at, maybe at Sixth Street, that's going to naturally, as you come to Sixth Street or come from Eighth Street towards Seventh Street, suddenly that view widens and you see more of the water. And now, as you get on Sixth Street, the view widens even more and you can see all of that waterfront. So it's really kind of a, a cool thing. I'm not the visionary type of person, but seeing what Bill has done and what Hari and Nick have done, it really makes that connection to the water, at least in my mind. Suddenly, that's a northern connection, less than a, a western connection. So as you go out there, if you, you take a time and stop and just look, yeah, that's, the water is right there. It's, it's very close to our downtown already. So we got a, got down a rabbit trail there.
Thank you.
So, yes, so there has been some, some excitement or at least enthusiasm about this. I th, I don't think excitement is a, is a bad word to use by a number of the folks down there, so. With that, Brian is up to talk about Sixth Street reconstruction.
Okay, thanks, Matt, and good evening, everyone. Uh, so as some of you may recall, uh, who've been around, uh, for a few years, back in two thousand eighteen, uh, Sixth Street was on, uh, the radar screen. Uh, we actually held some, uh, some meetings and some, uh, public outreach, uh, about, uh, what can, can be done with Sixth Street. Since then, we have done some improvements. Uh, we did a, a pathway connection there on the north side of Sixth Street that I've got a slide on. I'll point that out. Uh, we've done some, uh, improvements just along the roadway, just to try and improve some things with connectivity and pavement markings and that sort of thing. But we, we held up on the big plunge, um, in part due to the waterfront, uh, and other planning, uh, evolutions to try and let those get a little bit more mature before we, uh, again, um, go in, uh, in a, any kind of a significant way to Sixth Street. So now that those planning processes have moved forward and advanced, um, we're basically looking at and identifying a timeline where, um, Sixth Street, uh, in full reconstruction mode would be a, a twenty-twenty-three timeframe. Uh, and I've got, uh, just the elements of that project listed here. I've got some slides that we'll go through and, uh, um, just get into a little bit more detail with each one of these. Um, but stay, stay at the fifty-thousand-foot level, uh, at least at this point. Um, so, uh, engineering is ongoing. Um, back in, uh, twenty-twenty last year, uh, we actually put, uh, a little more effort into, uh, costs associated with the project. So we've got a, I'll still call it a conceptual level.
I'll still call it a conceptual level cost, uh, for the reconstruct. Uh, but I do think we're definitely, uh, sharpening the pencil and at least getting an understanding about ballpark. So moving forward, uh, over these next couple of years, um, it's a great opportunity to hold some additional public meetings. Uh, gather some, uh, additional input on details. Uh, and then also certainly engage the stakeholders along the way and, uh, try and, uh, synthesize everything into, um, what we hope to be, uh, a final set of documents that we would bid out in late twenty twenty-two, uh, with construction in twenty-three. Uh, certainly new pavement, uh, new utilities, uh, undergrounding utilities, uh, which I think is a great, uh, way to beautify things out there. Um, broadband, uh, you know, one of the big broadband hubs is right at the seventh street parking deck. Uh, so this is a great opportunity to look at ways to build that out. Um, and then we've got some non-motorized connectivity with the parking deck and then snow melt as well. So moving ahead, um, the limits of the project, uh, as we see him today. Uh, and, uh, basically the reason we're going into some of these side streets on college, uh, and Columbia is really underground utility driven. Uh, water main plays a big role in this. Uh, but snow melt transmission does as well. Uh, and then there is some storms or some pretty key storms or connections on those avenues on college and Columbia. The intersection at eighth street and college, uh, we would look at actually getting into that intersection. And I know that means getting into the snow melt, but there's some underlying utilities that we really, uh, want to upgrade there. Uh, and so we would take the opportunity with this project to incorporate that. And again, once this project is done, if you look at all these streets that form the network downtown, these are really the last elements of what I'll call the old build out or the old style street. You know, some of the infrastructure here associated on these streets are a hundred plus years old. Uh, but this is where it's at and this would basically clean up the whole of downtown, uh, as we know it. So it's exciting. It's encouraging. Um, and it's a pretty significant project for us. So, uh, next slide. Uh, and I'm really wishing we had that ninety inch, uh, big screen upstairs about right now. But I can just tell you that the, the cross-section elements of the project, um, would include, uh, on-street parking, uh, that's there now. We'd certainly try and retain as much of that as we can. One of the things that we'd like to incorporate with that, and I'll just go into the weeds a little bit here with this is, uh, we would like to introduce some green elements in those parking areas with, uh, pervious brick pavers. And I think that's a great way, if we can get those to connect into, uh, what's going on downtown. Obviously there's a lot of brick downtown and I think that would tie that in nicely, uh, to have that, uh, in various places along sixth street. So, um, the other thing too, we're not looking at introducing any kind of a on-street bike facility, uh, with this. But what we'd like to do is on the north side of sixth street, near the green spaces, we'd like to really bump out those non-motorized facilities, the sidewalk in particular, to accommodate, uh, a multi-use element there. So, um, that definitely is on our radar. Uh, and that's kind of what these cross-sections are intended to, to show here. So next slide.
Brian, before you move on, that's an, that's an area especially along window on the waterfront that gets an awful lot of traffic, motorized and pedestrian traffic during the, the springtime especially, tulip time. Are there, has that been thought through as well in terms of parking and, um, opportunities for that? I mean, I hate to have a big parking lot that sits there eleven months out of the year, but there's definitely a need there during May.
And, and the idea is certainly to try and retain as much of that as we can. So, um, the next slide here, uh, has to do with, and again, apologize for the size, but, um, you know, the green space is just that. It's, it's green, uh, around the roadway. Uh, and then there's some purple in there with, that was intended to show, uh, the parking facilities. And again, these would be on-street parking facilities, but they would have that pervious paver element to them uh, that I think would tie everything in, uh, pretty nice. But again, this is a detail, right, that, uh, is certainly subject to additional input and, uh, discussion as we move along the design process. So next slide please. Uh, the, um, the pink here basically shows that, that heavier bolded pink right above the rail line there in the center of the screen. That's where we did that, uh, HMA pathway. Uh, and I want to say that was two years ago we did that. But that was on the heels of that two thousand eighteen public input, uh, where we were able to take that green space, uh, and connect in, uh, elements of our existing sidewalk network and just fill that gap and make that connection. So that's been done, which is great. Um, what also we would like to do, and it's shown here, basically from the parking deck on seventh street, you can see those two vertical lines there. Reality, uh, being told here, we're probably going to be lucky if we get one of those with the rail. Uh, but we're going to shoot for two, uh, and see if we get one. Uh, but that basically would involve a, a direct connection between the seventh street parking deck and on the, you know, basically being able to exit out of the north side of the seventh street parking deck and get you directly to sixth street. So, um, that's a tall order. Um, I think everyone knows, um, getting across, uh, CSX is tough. Getting across CSX mid-block with something like this is really tough. Uh, so we're going to do our best and convince them that this is, uh, a good thing. So, um, so that's something that's in the works. Uh, and we'll try and pull ahead with that if we can, uh, and get that, um, uh, get that rolling with CSX. Next, talking about, uh, snow melt, there's really two elements to, uh, to snow melt. There's two different slides here. Uh, two phases, if you will. The first phase, uh, we've entered into some preliminary discussions with, uh, Freedom Village and we did this before, uh, COVID hit. Unfortunately, COVID kind of sidelined this whole thing, but what we'd like to do is make that connection, uh, along the east side uh, of Columbia Avenue, uh, from seventh street, which currently has the snow melt. Uh, and basically take it on up to what would be fifth street extended. And this is basically even with, uh, Freedom Village's west entrance, uh, on their building there. Uh, and basically, so that would be a snow melted connection to Freedom Village would connect into our system, uh, overall downtown. Um, we hope, again, if we can get some, uh, some things to fall in place with CSX and with Freedom Village, that this would be a fall twenty twenty-one construction. Uh, but again, I think that's best case. Uh, and, uh, certainly if that doesn't fall into place possibly twenty twenty-two, uh, we could see this happen. So, uh, we can go to the next slide then. If we look at sixth street as a whole, um, and we just look at snow melt opportunities along sixth street, uh, you can see the red here basically is the transmission. Uh, the blue is the possible, uh, distribution with the, the pavers and the PEX tube. Now there's a couple of really cl- key connection points, uh, on sixth street that we would like to do, and this is with transmission. Uh, but basically connect at sixth and Columbia, uh, that's a really important connection for us. And then also at sixth and river, um, as you all are aware, we've got that development going on right now at sixth and river. Uh, as part of that development, we're going to run mains from river around that development and basically tee things up at, at sixth street. And then with this sixth street project, we'd connect into those and make that loop. So, so that's really exciting and encouraging for us. The other thing that we, we do here, um, and I think there is a note on this, and again, apologize for the size, but on col- college avenue extended, uh, we certainly see another opportunity to, um, you know, we'll point those transmission mains to the north. And, uh, as that, uh, would get built out to the north, there's certainly going to be opportunities for snow melt, uh, should we want to move forward with that element of the project or that element as part of those, those improvements there to the north. So, so that's snow melt, uh, uh, basically in a nutshell. Again, none of this is, uh, um, is set in stone. A, a lot of this is very much subject to input and, you know, how everyone's feeling about, uh, what could, uh, could be, uh, there on sixth street and then obviously other parts of sixth street. So, uh, the last slide I have here has to do with the cost that I, uh, mentioned earlier. In twenty twenty, um, we did take the opportunity to do what I'll call conceptual level, uh, cost there. Those are listed there, uh, just real, um, kind of broad brush, uh, swipes that cost, uh, on some of the, the key elements uh, of the project there. But you get a sense, uh, at least what we're dealing with in terms of cost, uh, for the project. Obviously that's going to change a fair amount as we go through the details of the design. Uh, but at least it gives you all an, an idea, uh, in a ballpark of where we're, where we're looking. All right.
Any questions? Mike, don't forget to turn your mic on, Mike.
As I've been listening to all the presentations and, and Hari kind of brought it and it was cooking. But Brian really put it there, as we're developing this, I see sixth street as a transition zone. The, the one picture that Hari had there with the, the vision out, uh, this is a transition zone. So we need to be developing this road, developing the sides as that transition. As she rightfully said, you've got the urban on the, the one side. You've got the forest, if you will, on the other side. Um, I think a couple of those things that you showed there, Brian, we're starting that, but I don't think there's a stark enough, there, there's not a smooth enough transition. Again, I'm like Matt, I'm not a visionary. Um, I just know what my eyes like and what I'm hearing here and what could be out there. And we have a grand opportunity to have that transition, to make that natural progression to the north, to go from the hard face of downtown to the softness of window on the waterfront.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, there's a lot ahead of us. Uh, certainly opportunities, uh, exist there along sixth street to do, uh, to do some cool things to transition.
Yeah, Lynn.
Um, I mean, just maybe just piggybacking on what Mike said, um, yeah, I really, I liked what, the way you described that Hari, the, the transition between the urban to the green space. All right. If we were looking back south though, most of what's on that road is, on the, on the south side of sixth street is parking lot. Is there any thought to, to dealing with that? I mean, it seems like that would be, that would be a great opportunity.
Yeah, so I'll jump in and then Hari definitely can probably, um, say what Keith meant to say was and say it better than I. But a few things. One, um, Mike, I think absolutely, and we've already had some, you know, this is out there. So we've had some comments and pu- some comments. We understand like six and when we talk to the property owners out there, and we've done a lot of that. Sixth street right now, like if it doesn't, you don't have to stand out there very long and you understand how that road's used. And it's basically kind of a, a cut through, um, sometimes people going way too fast, not recognizing where they are. They're just trying to cut through. And absolutely we understand and would meet the goal of the design of sixth street in the future would be to discourage that cut through, but that it is more of that transition and that the road design, um, lends itself to that. Um, you know, when Hari talks about like the Central Park concept that you want, you know, you want it to be inviting that people come from the one side and go into the other. The second thing that I'll say, and I'll get, I'll get to you Lynn, the second thing that I'll say is when we talk about snow melt, one of the things that we've already moved forward and I think successfully accomplished, this guy right here has been helpful, but it's a team approach, is that that snow melt, we've now gotten approval from the state that the transmission is public infrastructure. So that the financing of that, and that's not an insignificant number, is now something that can be, um, assisted with tax increment financing. So that can't really be understated. That's a, that's a pretty big deal. Um, that really helps both the public, but quite frankly, even the private side of that investment. And then Lynn, yes, there's different types of parking lot along there. Some of it currently is private. And that's why it's so important that we're having conversations with those entities where there's private parking along there. Because they're very interested. We have, I think, some people attending both in person and virtually tonight that are really interested in this conversation and are encouraged that I think, as Ryan said, public investment spurs different private investment. But we also know that we do have, um, a little bit further down or in the area, some public parking also. Um, so I think that's going to be part of the discussion at some point also. Um, and this was before me, but those of you that were around, right? Part of why we're doing this planning also is so that we're prepared. And we're giving a vision for when people come forward and possibly want to use public space for private development persons. So we're not reacting to it, but that we're in a position of being in a good place as it relates to that. Hari, how can you improve what I just said? A lot of ways, I'm sure.
I'm not sure if I can improve that Keith, but I also welcome Nick to jump in here. Some of the unifying elements that we didn't quite unpack in terms of what ties downtown together is really landscaping, paving, lighting, for instance signage. And this is here where we have an opportunity with the stepping stone. I, I refrain from using that term stepping stone. We use the terms, the analogy of stepping stones to the waterfront on eighth. But as Matt was describing it, it sounded like this is now potentially a new stepping stone to the north. Is to use some of the softer aspects of the landscape, the types of plantings, for instance, as a way of marking that transition, right? The more formal plantings, the types of perennials, all season plantings that are very much part of downtown, the tulips that are now blooming. And as you move towards window on the waterfront, the landscape itself begins to take on a very different flavor. It's very metal-like, very prairie-like, a lot more grasses. And so that's also one in which at this point of transition, can we use other elements that are not necessarily built, but are very much part of this fabric to speak of that change as you move away from the city, which is very urban, very formal, and into that softer character of kind of, of north downtown that ties in naturally with window on the waterfront and a lot of that programming. And again, lighting too, in terms of the way it activates that kind of year-round recreation. So I think there are a lot of ideas here that I think the city team is well positioned as they hire additional consultants to think about really what is that design of the public space as Ryan so eloquently pointed out. This is the design of the public space and it's not just related to the park, but that streetscape and how that streetscape can now take on a different character in this transitional zone. Nick?
Uh, I, I think it raises a good point relative to the transition. There's a lot of urban design devices that deal with transition from an intense urban fabric to a, a rural, as it was described in the slides, or naturalistic. If we think about Central Park, it's really an urban streetscape on either side of, you know, Central Park West, for instance, where it's just high rises on one side and intense urbanism. And then on the other side, it's naturalistic, but it's still got that kind of identity of a New York City street with its lined, lined trees and sidewalks and things. But then it, the, 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 the street itself becomes a kind of boundary where it makes a really clear transition rather than a gradual transition. That's one kind of transition. Another kind of transition that might be imagined is one that is more subtle. It brings in a kind of softness. Maybe it becomes more organic in terms of its form. So it's not just like, when we look at the, the grid here, it's just orthogonal grid the whole time. Maybe that facility that, um, is wider for multi, you know, bike and pedestrian becomes a little bit more flowy, for instance, to kind of nod to that naturalistic context to the north. So I think that's a great point that you raise. And, um, relative to the parking lots, I think that's another really important point that gets raised is that here we are talking about this transition from, uh, an ur- a tight urban, fine-grained urbanism to a, a naturalistic, but there's a bunch of parking lots in between. And I would be curious if you could, you know, kind of expand on the other opportunities that you were, you were thinking of. Uh, Councilman or Councilwoman Raymond, relative to what might be in, on, you know, on your mind in, in those parcels. And, and it, because I, I asked that question because I think it's worth naming or bringing up in this conversation broadly.
Uh, well, I'm not exactly certain I had any particular idea. Um, I, I did appreciate Hari's explanation of adding more natural elements. That kind of made sense to me as we, as you moved towards the north downtown. But it would seem like, um, I would, I could imagine the, the street side being developed in more green space, really, even more of what, what Hari is talking about to, to move that, to make that transition, um, even more, um, drastic. Maybe that isn't quite the word I'm looking for, but.
And, and I think just to build off that point is a lot of the good work that has happened in the unified development ordinance and looking at stormwater management, that a lot of swells. in the Unified Development Ordinance and looking at stormwater management, that a lot of swells, right, rain gardens, is that one way of redefining the parking on the north side of Sixth Street as you transition to Window on the Waterfront, as a continued good stewardship of environmental impacts, but distinguishing this piece of north downtown from the rest of what's on Eighth Street, for instance.
Can I just add too, that's, that gets to that idea of, rather than a hard boundary here, the vision's always been kind of contemplated this as these fingers of green that come down and weave together the urban fabric and the, the green. And one of the terms that I think is really helpful in that discussion in this community is park-like character. So even if it's not a park proper, but it's facilities and amenities and parking and all of these things that have to sort of be in the mix, does it take on a park-like character?
Nicky.
Well, you will also want to, whether with plantings or structures or whatever, do something to calm the traffic, if it is a pass-through. I mean, we'll have to think whether, maybe you do that with when Brian does the road over. But it is a bit of an emergency vehicle pass-through, too.
My understanding is that Councilmember Trethuie is excited about a cul-de-sac potentially in this area.
Lynn, your, your point's really well.
I'm sorry, not a cul-de-sac, a roundabout.
Roundabout.
Oh, roundabout, I would support that.
You didn't get the reaction you were hoping for.
Yeah, I was like, I used the wrong term, a roundabout.
He's going to be here all week, folks.
But what, what Lynn's saying and what Matt said and, and what Mike said ties into actually some conversations that we had in Holland, with Holland and Bloom years ago, about how you draw people from Eighth Street toward the parking deck and vice versa, and how everyone in Holland likes to be able to park directly in front of the shop or the restaurant where they were wanting to go, and how do you, how do you facilitate or encourage that kind of movement and that kind of circulation throughout town? And so Mike, when you're talking about that transition, I'm not, I'm, when I think about that transition, I don't even think about it on Sixth Street, I think about it on Eighth and College, or I think about it on Tenth and College, you know, how do we draw Hope College students that direction? And how do we remove those barriers to people with non-motorized transport to get from one place to the other? And we do, I think we've got a great opportunity here to be able to look at this entire area and say, how do we make the flow of all of this work between, you know, the Eighth Street corridor, the Sixth Street corridor, Window on the Waterfront to the north, Hope College to the south, and make sure that, that this is a cohesive whole, so that when you're, you know, you're standing at the fireplace at, at Eighth and College and you're looking, looking to the north, you know, what's that thing that's drawing Matt there of, hey, I want to, I'm going to turn my run this direction and go north and see what's up that way, and how do we get people to do that? I think that's all part of this conversation, and I think that's more charrette-type language or discussions that we need to have at points in the future. But I'm, I'm really excited to hear people thinking about those kinds of things at this stage of the game, because I think it's important in our quest to get this right.
Can I just add one thing to that thought of that transition actually sort of taking place for the user experience at the fireplace? When, you know, in the coming days when you're around town, pay attention to the transition that takes place between the city and the campus. If you look east on any of the cross-streets from like Eleventh, Twelfth, Thirteenth, Fourteenth, there are many moments where you can sense the campus is kicking in, but you're several blocks to the west of that. And so you get that sense even though you're not quite making the transition physically quite yet. So that wayfinding and that telegraphing from one location to another can happen very intentionally.
Nicky.
Some of this is also Holland transitioning from the way it was thirty years ago. It's becoming a bigger city, a more intensive downtown area, there's more, you know, we, we think, oh, I wish it was the way it wa, you know, I have to go all the way to the north side. It's not that far, but in our heads, this is Holland and, and this is our little downtown, and all of a sudden it's expanding and, and I think mentally to have, this is good planning, to have these attractions where it's not as onerous to park on Seventh Street, to use a parking structure. I would still love no traffic at ten o'clock in the morning on Michigan River. But, you know, this is, we, this is part of our transition too, as a city. So we have to do this well. And I appreciate this discussion.
Other questions, comments?
And we're not done, there's more fun things to talk about. So I, I don't forget, I, I think it's back, maybe is Andy next again?
All right, ha, so I got so excited earlier, I, I jumped Matt a little bit, so I apologize about that. But I'm back, so let's talk about green stuff now, that's right. So we've got a few things happening down at Window on the Waterfront slash Riverview that have already begun to kind of start these pool balls falling into holes at the end of the table, like Keith was mentioning earlier. Some really exciting stuff that we've been working on, that started probably over a year ago with some removal of some trees and brush down at Window on the Waterfront. But these four things, lighting and ballfield improvements, we opened the view of the waterfront to the north with some removal of some trees and brush, like I mentioned, and some public art pieces that we're going to talk about here in a minute. So first up, outdoor playscape. So this is something Keith, I believe, talked to the group about a couple of meetings ago regarding partnership and collaboration that was brought to us a number of months ago, actually, it's just a few months ago, and it's moved really quick with the Outdoor Discovery Center. We had a meeting with Travis Williams and some of his team members discussing his preschool. You've probably seen the little dudes running around downtown, they have a preschool in the, in the corridor downtown, and they meander through parks and through the proper downtown and all over the place. And one thing that he brought to our attention that was missing from their program was the ability to have a playground. They don't have a space that has a playground, and they needed a spot where they could get those kids to burn off some energy, for one thing, and to also learn more about the natural environment that they're living in and existing in, and that's part of their preschool program. So he came to this, came to us with this idea, and we, we talked about a number of locations and really landed on Window on the Waterfront. This is something that actually that was mentioned in one of Hariye's slide at the bottom, you probably didn't notice it, but in two thousand nineteen, when we did our Parks and Rec master plan, Window on the Waterfront was designated as a spot that could support and should have a playground. We didn't know what that meant, what that looked like, but, so this came to us basically on a platter, and Travis came to us and said, hey, we really want to work with you on this, do you have a spot that we could do this? Window on the Waterfront, like I mentioned, was the spot. Travis is currently fundraising for this project. The playground that's on the slides that Matt is going through would land right in the middle, I don't know if we have an overhead picture of Window on the Waterfront there, oh yeah, we do. So if you're familiar with, you are familiar with Window on the Waterfront, at the bottom of this slide is our tulip garden that you can't see, and then Sixth Street. And then to the very north of it is the big underwater, underground water tank that the BPW used to use, a hill right there, and then the water marshes to the, to the north of that. So it's smack in the middle of this kind of, all these sidewalks are existing, the ones that run north and south. This playground would be built by the ODC, fundraised by the ODC. Like I said, they're currently fundraising for it, it's about a three hundred thousand dollar build, so it is not a cheap investment at all, and it's going to be extraordinarily cool. This will be a one-of-a-kind playground that we have in the city. Most of our, all of our structures are basically made out of man-made materials, plastics, metals. This will be nothing like that. It'll be boulders, logs, lots of landscaping, trees, climbing wall, they'll use sand, engineered wood fiber, lots of natural materials will go into this project, and we are completely stoked about it. They are hoping to get this built this summer, between now and then. We will come back to council for your approval on the project sometime probably later in April or May, like Keith mentioned earlier. So we're very excited about it.
Yeah, next one.
And Andy, just to say, like, the proposed place, if you go out there and you've looked at it many times, like, it fits where, right now, we're intending it to go. There's not a sense that it's in the way of anything that we have now or that we would envision in the future.
Right.
So even though we're talking about a lot of other moving parts, we think that this fits and kind of starts the momentum and the investment, if you would.
Yeah, it absolutely, hundred percent fits, and it's a perfect spot, it's a perfect product, actually, to be put there. If you're thinking about and talking about the natural environment, everything that's been mentioned earlier, this kind of structure would be great there. It'll be two separate kind of playgrounds with some green space in the middle, some topography changes, which will add some really creative aspects to it, and we're, we're getting a lot of positive feedback on it. We took it to the Parks and Rec Commission, they all really enjoyed it and liked hearing about it and seeing it. And like I said, it fits right into our master plan from a couple of years ago. It's great, it was a great partnership, too. We're really happy and fortunate to have a partner like the ODC to help us along with this. It's wonderful.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Question and a comment. I believe Tulip Time had their kids' zone in that same area some years ago. So that's kind of cool to see this rendering for kids over in that area. And then is the style similar to what they have out at Outdoor Discovery Center?
Yeah, it'll be along those same lines. They've built, I don't know how many, Travis told me, I can't remember, over a dozen of these types of playgrounds throughout the community, whether it's here, Hamilton, Outdoor Discovery Center, Ridge Point Church. It'll be that kind of structure, where it'll be, it'll be real logs. In fact, we had a meeting earlier last week, and we're on the hunt for some large logs. If we happen to take some down as a tree crew, we'll supply them with some of the, the logs. So that'll be a good reuse, and we've done that in a couple of other projects with them already. So yeah, it'll mimic that, Quincy, exactly right. I don't know, maybe, no, I think there's art. Oh, yeah. Talk about, it's, there's no slide on it, but, you want me to talk about public art? Okay, where's that later? Do art? Okay.
See, it's a discussion.
Yeah, so we're good, ask questions, whatever. So Public Area Advisory, Public Art Advisory Committee. I was trying to go back and figure out when we formed that, it was probably a year and a half ago, I think we started meeting. It's a group comprised of, you may know this, but it's a group comprised of different community members. Lorma Freestone heads it, we've got a Hope Professor, Parks and Rec Commissioner, Councilmember, and a couple of staff members, including myself and Keith, that he runs it. I just sit and take notes and listen, it's pretty fun. But we, we've been talking about art, and the group's mission is really to develop procedures on how to accept art, where to place art, inventory art and monuments around the, around the city. And Window on the Waterfront has come up a number of times with those, in those meetings, and sometime in the near future, you will also hear about some of the efforts that the group has been going through to develop an online story map of art, as well as other things. It's a really cool, it's live now, but it's not completed yet. Alex Evanstein from Matt's department has been really critical in helping us develop that. And we've landed on Window on the Waterfront and other green spaces, because it's public, most of our public spaces are parks, a lot of them at least, and Window on the Waterfront already has some art elements there, and it's kind of a natural fit for arts to be. If you can think in your mind, we've got some whimsical blue benches that Rotary donated a number of years ago there. We've got bronze sculptures there, we've got tree protectors that are shaped like tulips. So there's a number of things there that are colorful, playful, meaningful, and we think that's a great spot to expand our art inventory and potentially expand that into the north downtown and throughout Window on the Waterfront. So it's a pretty cool, pretty cool thing going on. So stay tuned for that, coming, I don't know when, in May, possibly.
All right, so back to me. So I've got one kind of neat thing that we'll look at, and then kind of some of the boring stuff that keeps me awake at night. So these are renderings of a potential downtown ice rink. These are the first times, I think, any, anybody outside of Mr. Frank Crye has seen these, I think maybe Andy has. But as you all know, we've received a number of generous donations and continue to every year from Mr. Crye, and we feel that, you know, Andy and I have taken a number of rides around downtown, and when you look at where an ice rink could go, this area is definitely high, if not the highest, probably the highest on the list. So Mary, you talked about having the structure or something that's well-lit and draws people from Eighth Street down to the Sixth Street corridor and Window on the Waterfront. I don't have any ideas yet of what that could be, but maybe if we, we sit around for a while and talk about it, maybe we could come up with one.
I, I just want everyone to know, Matt and I did not plan this ahead of time.
No, we did not. So this, conceptually, would be well-lit, would be refrigerated, because we're just not quite cold enough here in Holland to have a solid ice. Andy had a portable ice rink for a number of years, and it, it was mixed results. So this could get us, you know, potentially from October to May, ice skating in the downtown. We would build this much like we built, more than likely, much like we built the dog park restrooms, where we would have restrooms, we'd have refrigerating equipment in one room, and then we'd, we think we'd have a skate rental. When I was growing up, everybody had ice skates, nobody has ice skates anymore. And we've gotten a number of ideas of how to use this outside of the seasons where refrigerated ice is possible. So we think this is a pretty exciting piece. There are ribbons of ice, there are L-shaped pieces of ice. But yeah, pavilion, well-lit, and just would grab you from, from Eighth Street.
Are, are those particular cross-streets that are there, what's, and if so, what, where are we talking about?
So, these are.
In those parking lots, yeah.
These are conceptual designs. There was, it was alluded to earlier that perhaps the road configuration right there would not stay exactly the same as it is along Sixth Street. We do have some room in there, we've got, the site is, you know, we've got a peaking station nearby to everywhere in that park that at some point will go away, but it's not going to be anytime soon.
Dave's going to get rid of that.
So he, but it, it has, it has value to the community. It's huge value to the community, the BPW ratepayers and our taxpayers. So it'll go away, and when it does, it'll, we'll make, make sure that whatever is in that area is going to be good where it is when it's gone. So, yeah, there are a number of iterations, this is really high-level, conceptual, what could ice look like in that Window on the Waterfront area? Where could it go? We need to still determine that, and obviously, we're going to come back to city council dozens probably of times with touchpoints as we move this project forward, so.
So the short answer on that is, those are not any particular cross-streets?
He's on the witness stand.
Yeah. Mr. Van Dyke, can you maybe rephrase my question?
Fortunately, that would be my first time under cross-examination, so, all right. So we'll move on from that. Where we're at now, discovery and due diligence. We know the site was a dump, you know, for a long time. We know the site stored, there actually had dredged storage facility in there. So we actually have been working, Keith and myself and Ron Vanderveen, for I think over a year now, that we've been trying to move this due diligence forward, right? As, as Hariye said, kind of in one of those slides, there's a point where you go from vision to plan to engineering, what do we got to do, how are we going to do it? And then actually creating construction documents, bidding the project out, and getting it built, right? That's on the horizon for us. But right now, we're really in that due diligence phase, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out what we're dealing with, working with engineering firm to, to get soil borings done in there. Environmental impact, what does that look like for us? You know, there was a study that was done in eighty-eight for an, an area center that was going to go in there, and they have done some, some of the, not preliminary engineering, but some engineering. Well, construction technologies changed a lot in the last thirty years. So are there things that we can do differently to build roads in there, so that we can hand those off to Brian? When we do build a building, you know, an ice rink is going to be a building and, an ice structure and then our restroom facility, that's a building. We better know how we got to build it so that it doesn't, you know, have structural issues or, or things like that moving forward. And, and obviously, how do we build the ice rink? But we're going really from vision, right? And there's been a lot of, there's been thirty years of vision, and we're transitioning into that execution phase, where we can start to do the things that bring people down to Window on the Waterfront, draw them, you know, there's that vision. You know, there's that vision asset. It's intentionally, it's not been exactly clear how we're gonna draw people across Sixth Street, Seventh Street and Eighth Street to get them downtown. But we think elements like a sweet playground is gonna draw people downtown. We think elements like an ice rink. We think the beautification of Sixth Street. Because that street is not gonna look anything like it does now, right, or Brian?
It's pretty ugly right now.
It's, yes. It's, it's a bit of an ugly duckling right now that's gonna emerge in twenty twenty-three and be beautiful down there. So there, there's a lot of things that are gonna draw people to Window, you know. As I said, that's one of my normal runs, right? I like to run through there. And frustration is not the way, word, probably disappointment is that there's not more people down there. You're two short blocks off of downtown that's just chock full of people. And we don't have, we don't have anybody that uses that. There's a few walkers from, and runners from Hope. I see a lot of the same faces from Freedom Village, so it does get some use. But it really, we're really looking forward, I am and Andy is, speak for Andy, to drawing people down there, to using that park, to going out this time of year. I'm a duck nerd, right? I like to look at birds. And there's been about eight different species of ducks in Window on the Waterfront in the last week, all in their beautiful spring plumage. There was a golden eagle earlier this year. And we talked before, I talked about that transition where transitioning into that wild, right? And it's only a couple of blocks. So the, the investment that we'll be making recommendations to you to make moving forward, I think are very exciting for us and for you and for people that are gonna be here a lot, a lot longer than, than I'm gonna be. So I'm just excited to get this moving forward to this point. I know Mark, we're not done. Mark Scott wants to talk through some of the zoning stuff as well.
Welcome, Mark. Unless there are questions from Council? For Matt? No? He, he doesn't answer the questions anyway, so.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I have twenty-seven slides and I think we're gonna be here till eight-thirty, so.
Sounds good.
I know you like to stay on schedule and I, seriously, I, I just had some slides. I was gonna kinda go through the setup, the Udo setup. You all know it well. But in regards to, what the Planning Commission is working on in, in, for zoning down in this neck of the woods, the form-based code stuff that we're working on too. And just gonna be kinda showing you some slides and so forth. But I, I, I can dare say that, that perhaps, I mean, we're gonna be spending a lot of time with Council members when Udo gets brought to you in, in the very near future. And we'll have ample opportunity to, to talk all through the downtown form-based code districts and everything else. So I don't know, I can, I could, we can perhaps punt till a future time if you want and they can get somewhat back on schedule.
Yeah, but why, why don't you just, real quickly, just go through your slide deck?
Okay.
Because I know you can land the plane, Mark.
I think, everybody that tells me says I got a reputation with just like, Mark, land the plane, right, Jen? Okay, so, all right, put your.
No, just real quickly, I think give overview and some of it's just preview of things to come.
Yeah. So Matt, just kinda, kinda go quickly, well slowly, through some of the slides. So I just threw, not that quick. I threw a couple of slides up here because, you know, some of these are, this one right here, the Towers on River is kinda right on the edge of the north downtown area, okay? And it's really kinda knocking on the door of that area. And the, the reason I wanted to show this is, is number one, because it's a very contemporary design and, and I think there's a lot of that in downtown Hound. We're gonna see more of it. Our form-based code and the ordinances that we're working on are gonna be promoting stuff like this. But architecture is gonna be able to express itself in many different ways down in the north downtown and in the other form-based code areas. So, but I really, what you, what I wanted you to see in with the next slide, too, is kinda the urban form of that. So the, the buildings are sitting up close to the street. It's a walkable design. It's got a presence right there that you can feel, kinda the outdoor room. So this one is the Rest Haven G D K site and it sits, sits very proudly on the northwest corner of Ninth and River. Obviously, a traditional design, not contemporary, but we have many buildings like this downtown, too. So just all to say, we're, we very much would want to have a broad palette of buildings and, and designs and so forth. So Matt, you can hit it. So I just had a couple of slides here, you know, I can't see that one, but. So I wanted to throw in a couple visuals from the waterfront Holland, visioning stuff that we did. And this will be really hard for you to see, but this one, and then perhaps Matt, go to the next one. This one is really kinda showing a perspective if you were over the marsh and looking down over Window on the Waterfront and looking down towards Sixth Street and how the potential streets of College and, and Fifth and Fourth Streets or whatever could, could be built out. And, and where the city is, is, is taking the lead in building that all-important infrastructure. And, and then the private development kinda coming in behind it and we're partnering with them. And, and you can see the types of buildings that are, that are kinda being shown there. Big buildings, small buildings, but buildings right up to that street in that redefined kinda Window on the Waterfront street and how that, that relationship could really happen between a built-up urban form along Sixth Street and then transitioning right down to the Window on the Waterfront. So Matt, you can hit the next one. So I have a few slides here, a number of slides, kinda taking a, a quick peeks at what the Planning Commission will be getting to you for Udo and form-based code stuff. So this is just a quick snapshot of the downtown area zoning map. The area in light blue is, is gonna be our form-based code area for the downtown. And the following slide, don't go there quite yet, but the following slide will kinda show the, the different form-based code districts that we're have showing. But just note on the map here, we are the waterfront Hound area along Apadnus, the working waterfront. That's gonna remain industrial in character, or it's being proposed to remain industrial. And north along the Window on the Waterfront area, we're, we're looking to create a new open space zone district. And all the large parks, Window on the Waterfront, Collin Park, Mad Urban Park, everything, Veneralty Farm. It would be looked to rezone them to this new open space zone district. And it certainly would accommodate uses like an ice skating rink and, and public infrastructure like that. So Matt, you can go to the next slide. So this one just kinda zeroes in a little bit more on the north downtown area. The, the areas in yellow are denoting the north downtown form-based area. The one in red there is kind of a part of the, the central downtown F B C area and then kinda to the east there. The purple one is the east downtown form-based code area. Different regulations pertain to those. There's a lot of similarities between them, but there are some differences and you'll get into those when we come to you in another month or so with the distinctions. Matt, you can go to the next one. So this slide is a little fuzzy. It's a lot fuzzy. So this is gonna be in, in the Udo, we will have a revised one that's much more clear. But this one is really kinda showing some maximum building heights that are being proposed in the downtown area, too. So you can get an idea of the, yeah, the massing of the buildings and, and the height of the buildings that are being looked at. So you can see the vast majority of downtown is being proposed to have a, a maximum building height of six floors. And that's actually what the existing C three district would allow for, about seventy-five feet in height. But notably, the, the orange area there, which is roughly, and the orange area is in the north downtown area and that's roughly area from River Avenue on the west to what would be College Avenue extended from Sixth Street there. Where, where, the Planning Commission is thinking that ought to be a, that'd be a good area to have a higher building height. So allowing buildings to go up to a maximum height of nine stories. And then you can see there's another area on the west side of River Avenue. I believe that's between, oh, like Fourth and Second Street or, or something like that. I can't read it. But actually looking to potentially allow up to a twelve-story buildings in that area. And there's, there's many reasons for that and, and Nick eloquently talked about this a year or so ago when we were doing waterfront Hound stuff. But River Avenue kinda goes down the spine of the downtown. It's kinda the heart, the highest area that goes down towards the river. So having buildings up in that higher point is kind of a, a neat urban design thing is you'll be able to have views out toward the water, to both waters, the big water of Lake Mack and, and the marshland water also. And then the buildings can kinda cascade down below them with, with the lower heights as you get closer to the water. So, next slide.
One, one additional thing there, Mark, and Matt, I hate to make you go back, but just to the north of the nine and just to the east of the twelve in that, right in that corner area, what's gonna be going in that spot that was also one of the driving forces on that?
Yes. And, and that's kind of a late add and I didn't get onto this map here, but that's, that's right at the Y. So that's where the, the used car lot is right now. So we're looking to have that also be north downtown.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was, I was also gonna remind Council that's where the biodigestor, the anaerobic digestor is going.
I, I didn't see your, where you're going with your blinker there.
Yeah, with a, you know, so, and that's, that's at about a hundred feet tall.
Yes, it is.
So the, one of the ideas there was to, to not have that standing proud of everything else that was around it.
Yeah, very good. Okay, Matt. Okay, just the next few slides. We'll quickly go through these. So this is just a slide that was gonna, it, it narrates the, the descriptions between the various form-based code districts. So we can go through that. Go to the next slide. There's a section on building typologies and we'll be able to talk that with you later. Next slide. Similar section on frontage types. Next slide. And then we kinda have sections for all the form-based codes that are gonna denote all the envelope standards. And this is kinda more like the zoning standards, like the setbacks for the buildings, the, the minimum setbacks, maximum setbacks, et cetera. So just a snippet of the things that we will be coming to you in the future in regards to all things zoning and form-based code related for downtown. So, thank you.
Well done, Mark. No one can, I mean, that was good. So certainly any questions, discussion? Hopefully, what you got a sense of here is that you have a team of people that are coordinated, that are talking, that have been working off of vision, but haven't been sitting idle either. There's been a lot of work moving, as we've talked about today, kinda along that iterative path from vision to implementation. And we're, I think you could tell, we're pretty excited about it. And it doesn't mean that there's still not opportunity for input or, you know, all those types of things. But Matt's, as you guys all know, Matt's our get-er-done guy, right? So he, he's getting, he's getting eager to get some projects in his hands and get her done. So with that, I hope that fulfills what you were looking for, is basically having an, an update on north downtown.
Yeah, Dave?
Real quick question. In terms of right-of-way, do we, is there a right-of-way? We talked about the extension of College Avenue to the north. Are there also, do we have right-of-ways for the extension to the east of Fifth Street and also maybe Fourth Street? Does that exist? So that all could create a grid at some point if we wanted.
Yes, that, that was originally plotted off up there, so it's all set and ready to go.
Also, I just wanna say, a little bummed about the super, you know, first refusal thing because that screws up all my plans. But the idea of characterizing this as sort of a central park for the area, I think is a great one. When I think of, we talked about in uptown, you know, uptown Holland. And when I think about that, it implies a lot of things like residential and commercial and recreational things. And you, you know, there's, there's a lot that we can't influence, like the residential section. I mean, as much as I'd hope that we might be able to use some of this as a cattle, uber catalyst for some kind of development. I'm not sure if that's valuable, but it will have to be left to the, in the hands of private developers. But for us to create this sort of context of the connection between urban and the natural part, the art part of it is especially interesting to me because if you look at a lot of context for art, like Meyer Gardens, or I'm thinking of a couple of miles stretch in Chicago, a canal that has art. There's a place up north somewhere that has this art path through the woods. There's, there's sort of a natural, organic connection between art and its various forms, you know, and, and nature. So that's a very smart connection. And the park's a great idea. So, yeah.
Quincy?
Really quick. Have we discussed food trucks over in that area at all?
Yes.
Okay. Another question is, in order to do that, would we have to change zoning?
So Mark said it's in Udo. I think the other thing, though, that part of the food truck discussion that I think we need to recognize is Kara happens to be here also tonight and Amy. We're really with the D D A and the P S D and the existing restaurants. I, I think, I think there's a way that we really need to think through that well and make sure that it's not detracting from, but that it actually adds to the vibrancy of downtown. So I, I think we wanna be appropriately cautious and inclusive in that conversation and not just kinda short-term slap something in, right? Like everything that we talked about tonight is really, like, we think things through and we do it right.
Right.
So I know there's an urgency of some that, like, wouldn't that be cool? But we wanna think through it well, too.
Okay, so you guys are thinking about that and conversing about it. All right, that's good enough for me right now. Thanks.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
So I, when I watch movies, you know, I tend to like, like these thrillers and, you know, the ones that make you think. And at the end, you get this aha moment. And so I, there's a few comments that I wrote down. Just wanna make comments and maybe a couple of questions. But through the movie, right? I mean, I think the next piece is, the next, the next bit, so we're transitioning. But so on the skating rink, you, you mentioned the ribbon, so is that gonna be kind of like a path? That we're looking at freezing. It's not a necessarily a pond, right? I mean, it's.
Those are four conceptual plans.
But none of those was a pond, I don't think, right? I mean, it was a ribbon or it was like the L shape and.
Yep, there's not, the idea at this point is not to build an N H L rink down there. It's to build something more like what's in Chicago and New York where it's a ribbon of ice that has a flow of people in one direction skating. So you're not getting collisions and things like that.
And what are you imagining would be the, the offseason activities?
There are a lot, there's a lot of different options. There's a lot of different, and I should, I'll just put this out there. There's artificial ice. So there's ice that's, you can skate on that's not ice. And can we integrate that in there? Could we integrate pickleball courts with it? I don't know. Sure, maybe. Could we integrate a roller-relating roller derby? I don't know. Maybe. But I guess, I'm not, not making light of your question at all.
Right, right.
I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make the point that we're not to that point yet, right? We haven't gotten that far. We, we really felt, I felt, and I, I know a number of the Council members have expressed this, that get something conceptually in Frank's hands so he can see what's going on. And I've had some awesome conversations with Frank. But we're not to the point where, hey, it's gonna be a, a pickleball courts in the offseason and it's gonna be, or it's gonna be artificial ice, so it can be year-round. But those are all possibilities. And kinda that, we, this starts that process in more, much more in earnest, right? Because now it's public and people can look at these renderings. They're, they're public documents now. They can see, hey, that, that really squiggly one looks really cool or that one that just goes around in circles great. Or what, what if we had this, the L-shaped covered one and you could do this or that or the other thing with it? So I can't really answer any of those specific questions, but they're all possibilities, right? So.
All right. And then the, the O D C playground, man, that's, so that's no cost to us other than maintenance? I mean, what does the maintenance look like? Obviously, it's a different kind of park.
Yeah. So there will be, there will be maintenance, much like we maintain landscaping and things like that. There'll be an ongoing cost if they put engineered wood fiber down, to put some wood fiber down like we do at seventeen of our other playgrounds in the city. But yeah, the, the upfront investment will all be on them and then we will just be tasked with taking care of it.
The, yeah, the, the public art, I'm glad we mentioned that. I mean, I knew we were going to. But I think the presentation that Council will receive here in a couple, a few weeks, I think is gonna be just kind of a continued nod towards some of these. I think is going to be just kind of a continued nod towards some of these things, where we're thinking about the different activities that will draw people towards that waterfront. Yeah, and I think, I think anything that we can do to, I mean, to have attractions throughout the various seasons is going to be pretty essential, I mean, want it to be busy every time of the year. And then I did, just, I know CSX, you know, we make comment about, you know, some of the challenges there. But I'm curious, I mean, I love the idea of, I think, making the parking ramp, right? Or having clear access directly to Sixth Street, if we can. Obviously, it's going to be a challenge, but I'm just curious. I mean, is it, is it just the day that you catch them on? I mean, with a conversation, you know, at any given point, is it, like, what do we have to, and what strings do we have to pull?
Who could ever say no to Brian White?
That's what I'm thinking, that's why...
Just to give you an example, CSX has gone through, I think, four different roadmasters in the last three or four years. And that's like the first step that you would do to talk with CSX. And then they typically get you to the folks down south in Florida. And then you go through the hoops there to try and get what we can get. So, that process has started, but we're nowhere near the end yet for that.
Okay, so it's, I mean, I'm not saying it's just the process, but it's a lot of the process that they, I mean, you have to go through as opposed to the actual outcome that you're seeking.
Yeah, yeah, there's no guarantees that you're going to get to your desired outcome. So, particularly with the mid-block setup that we're looking at, yeah.
But just give them a better example, Brian, Seventh and Pine, how long did it take us to get that crossing fixed?
Right.
Yeah, that, all of it, it's just, it's time, it really is time.
Then, just the, for the north downtown, on the zoning, did the, the section that is now named at nine stories high, was that 12 before? Or no? Has that been nine this whole time?
No, actually, that area is Zone C3, I believe, right now.
Right, but I'm saying with the various iterations of the Udo, like, has that changed during this process? Was it not 12 before? Did it change down to nine?
I don't...
There've been, there've been a number of iterations of it over time. We got, we had some initial proposals, and then we put it out there to the public. It got response back from, from the public. And I know, I know we've made some changes, I couldn't tell you without going back and looking at all the notes exactly what was where, but I think that there have been some changes that have taken place down in there.
Okay, I'm liking the nine. I mean, I, yeah, my recollection is that there was a little bit more area that had 12 as part of the height. And so, I'd like the, yeah, 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 so I like the nine.
And I just have two concerns, and we don't get into it now, but when the Udo comes and all this, and I'm glad this is a collaborative group that communicates well, but my concerns are, which were very lightly touched in the material that we're given, is traffic. And I always think of congestion and that kind of thing. And then sustainability, and how we build and the energy and all that aspect. I would like to see those addressed. Thanks.
Anyone else? Great, thank you all. It was, it was wonderful to have you all here in person and be able to do this. And we're going to move on to our next subject matter, and it is exactly 6:45, so we're right on time.
As usual.
I'm, you could, it's impossible to try to guess how long we go, so I apologize if we're running behind. But I think you could tell we had a lot of excitement.
We're getting, I'm getting some messaging. Why don't we take a five-minute break in between, let you guys transition over, and we'll be, we'll be back here, let's do exactly at 7:30.
All right.
All right, we've got everybody back. Phase two of the meeting, item number three, diversity, equity, and inclusion update. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you again. We're excited to continue this presentation that we're doing tonight, right? And I think, I think this is the last of the four updates coming out of the advance. And I'm going to get out of the way quickly here, because you have three presenters tonight that are doing incredible work. And we're really excited to talk about the external and internal work that's going on and the partnerships. And really, the person that's leading it all and is doing a fantastic job is Esther. So, Esther, we're just excited to hear you tell us all about what's going on tonight.
Well, I'm really excited to be here today, because we have so much exciting to share. But I think that we still need to be very mindful.
Yeah, Esther, could you either turn your microphone on or get it a little bit closer to your mouth there? You don't, you don't speak nearly as loudly as Mr. Trithuie does.
Can you hear me now? Oh, good. I thought maybe it was because I had two masks on. All right, so I am really excited to be here today with my partners Jennifer Orm and Cara Dalvari. We've been doing a lot of work in our community. And I can't, I'm going to start the presentation by letting you know it is a little lengthy, but I'm going to take opportunities to advance it a little bit quicker and land the plane. But all the information I have to share today is important. So, I wouldn't be able to start this presentation without just acknowledging the fact that structural racism, institutional racism, we know that disparities continue to occur in employment, housing...
Try it one more time, Esther, it's...
There we go. All right, so what, the slides may not necessarily match what I'm seeing. I'm going to land the plane. So, we know that we continue to see disparity in education, housing, employment, and many other areas. And we know that COVID-19 has really magnified this and made it a reality for many people that normally didn't see this. We have had a lot of legislation passed to ensure that discrimination is illegal, but we continue to see inequity. And we know that it creates discriminatory treatment, unintentionally, I feel, most times. There's invisible barriers to access and opportunity to our government in particular. And then we know that there's outcomes that are not necessarily beneficial to the individual or to the community as a whole. So, I am so excited to talk about the Government Alliance on Race Inequity. So, first of all, I have to share that they are now part of Race Forward, who is working on systemic, addressing systemic racism and teaching communities, whether it's in the commercial area or in government, to begin to address some of those systemic things within the work that they're doing. But the Government Alliance on Race Inequity is strategically positioned to work with communities to achieve racial equity and advance opportunity for those that we serve in our community, because we do work for the residents of our community. I also wanted to let you know that part of this group, the Other and Belonging Institute at UC Berkeley, they're part of the Haas Institute, of which I use to work on inclusive cities. So, I'm really excited to see that these three groups, this is relatively new, that these three groups are all working together, because it perfectly aligns with some of the work that has been done. So, as you know, in 2017, 2018, I started working on the Inclusive Cities Initiative and did some community surveys. And I just want to give a quick update on this, so that you can see what was the result of that, what we found, and what we have done, and what we could, and when I say that we are moving the needle, that doesn't mean that the work stops just because it's highlighted in green. So, some of the things that we talked about were affordable housing, walkways and sidewalk, sidewalk blocks, transportation accessibility, neighborhood opportunities to interact, welcoming diversity on Eighth Street, cultural celebrations, and our LGBTQIA ordinance. In any event, we achieved most of those things, we've managed to move the needle. We're not at 100%, but we're working on it, and this is continuous improvement work. This doesn't stop, it's not a one and done. So, the GEAR model will provide a shared framework. So, what this basically means is that as all of the municipalities come together in Ottawa County, we're all going to have a common framework of talking about race within our organizations. This will help build organizational change. And when I say that, what I mean is that we're going to begin to look at ways and opportunities to share the work with our different departments and investigate, how can we move ourselves forward in the work? So that it becomes, it's an, it's just, we just do it. We don't even have to think about it, it's integrated into our work processes. So, as we begin to implement these racial equity tools, we're going to use data and metrics. We want to make sure that whatever it is that we're working on, it's moving the needle. And again, just because we move it in one direction, doesn't mean that the work stops there. So, what does this look like? The Government Alliance on Race Inequity, we're using that framework under the leadership of Ottawa County. We have a subcommittee that is made up of different individuals, and we're kind of driving that work. How are we going to do it? As a matter of fact, I'm really excited, because today we worked on the scope of work for the GEAR model. What does that look like? What are the deliverables? And these are the communities that we're working with. We're working with Zeeland, Grand Haven, Holland Board of Public Works, the City of Holland. There's going to be other communities in Ottawa County, but this is our little core group. So, City of Holland, how does that fit in for us? We're going to have a two-pronged approach, and it's going to be, we're going to parallel-path it. So, the external strategy, I want you to think of it as internal work that we deliver to the community. How are we going to start that? First of all, we're going to, as we begin to build that framework around normalizing the conversation, we're going to complete an audit. Each department will have a little audit sheet, and will begin to look at, okay, this is an opportunity. We're doing good here, we're not doing so good here. And then we can begin to really set a plan forward. So, it's going to require department engagement. The Racial Equity Toolkit, which I'll talk about later on in the program, is really something that will become, again, it'll, we'll just do it. And it's going to look different for every department, depending on the project that you're working on. It's not the same model for every department, it's going to look different. It has to, it has to be, we have to execute the work in the way that our community can engage. And of course, learning communities, we have to continue to learn and to reach out to our community. And then, as many of you know, we do have a cultural calendar, transactional things that we do in our community to continue to move the work as we do the substantive work. So, our internal strategy is going to rely a lot on how we do our work inside City Hall. Jennifer Orm, our Director of Human Resources, is going to be an instrumental part of that work. And again, we're going to do an internal assessment with our employees. Jennifer has dedicated energies and wants to create a Diversity and Inclusion Council internally. Here's where we begin to see work with City Hall, with our employees, to create diverse and inclusive practices, to review our procedures, and again, to engage employee learning. And a very important part of the work that we do is based on accountability. And many of us know that if it's not on the performance plan, we probably are not going to work on it. So, if it's not measured, it won't get done. And I am really thankful that Keith has come on board with that and recognizes how important that is. So, this continues improvement work, it's not a one and done, I mentioned that to you earlier. It's ongoing, it's going to change, it has to be pervasive, so that you will understand what we're doing, our city employees will understand what we're doing, and our community will see the outcomes of that work, and they will begin to recognize, hey, something's happening that hasn't happened before. So, these are going to be substantive, actionable items, and it's going to be a little bit harder to do this work. It's not going to be as easy as like one and done, it's going to take time. So, as we begin to build the framework and normalize the conversation, so that everyone understands what it means when we say equitable practices, when we say we need to measure the outcomes, what exactly does that mean? How do we engage other groups? As we begin to organize the work, it's going to be hard, it's not easy work, but it can be done. And I know that our city team can do it. And then, as we operationalize, it's just intuition, it's intuitive, we just do it. So, I'm going to start, from this point going forward, talk about what we are doing. So, I'm really glad to say that, happy to say that our city manager supports the GEAR model. And he's been very supportive of me when I do, when I start to talk about this work and begin to implement initiatives. Very supportive of our community partnerships, which is really important, because I can tell you, the GEAR work cannot be done in a silo. I can't do it by myself. I need my community partners to work with, and we can learn from each other and build on that work. Some of us haven't started the work, some of us are a little bit ahead. We're all going to come together and do this work. Now, I don't, just because we're doing this work, I don't want you to think that the other things that we've been working on is going to stop. That doesn't, that's not going to happen. We're going to continue to move it forward. And there is a budget attached to the work, and also accountability, as I mentioned earlier, as it relates to our performance review. So, what's the Human Relations Department doing? Many of you know this, I talked to you about this at the council advance, so here's where I might zoom a little bit. So, obviously, we have a diverse community. We do provide bilingual services to our Spanish-speaking communities. And we also, as part of the Title VI program, provide assistance to individuals who require languages, accessibility, sign language, whether it be hearing aids or disability assistance for members from our disabled community. We also have been working diligently on trying to provide as much bilingual education or literature as possible. When it's possible, we do this. We can't do it with everything, but we certainly are doing our best in those areas, especially where we think the Latino community, who is more comfortable reading literature and communicating in Spanish, we're trying to make sure that it's accessible. And then again, as we do our videos and we do just general translations. I just want to give you an idea of how important that work is in our community. In 2020, we did 126 hours, approximately, of translations within City Hall for members of our community. This also includes all the, it includes all the departments and the Holland Board of Public Works. As you know, 2020 was a rough year, but in normal years, we do roughly around 250, approximately 250 hours a year. So, we also continued, have continued to provide learning opportunities for community members, as I mentioned in the advance. This year, we have provided more learning opportunities for our city council and our boards and commissions. And then Jen's going to cover a little bit of what we've done with our city staff. And as you recognize all of these names here, they're all partners that we continually work with. And not all of our partners are listed, but these are the major partners that we work with. LIDA, GVSU Inclusion and Equity Institute, Ottawa County Office of DEI, Hope College and Western Sum, the Alliance for Cultural and Ethnic Harmony. We've worked with private professionals to get expertise on some of the work that we're doing, the West Michigan Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, West Coast Leader, West Coast Chamber. So, these slides are normal, you've seen these before, you saw these at the advance. Things, organizations that we are working with, learning opportunities that we've provided. And then, just to, there's a little learning opportunity here that I thought I would mention and focus on. On April 8th, we're going to be doing the tenant landlord training. We are including the 58th District Court, Judge Cano always makes an effort to be there, our Fair Housing Center of West Michigan, Legal Aid of West Michigan. And we also, this year, because of the eviction diversion program and the fact that it's been extended and there's less barriers for our residents who are suffering from COVID-19, and also our landlords, we want to be sure that we provide this information, so that it's available to our residents and our landlords. Civil discourse, we're going to continue this series going into 2021. It's going to look a little different, but you can get the gist there. And then again, all of the cultural things that we do regularly. And then again, all of the cultural things that we do regularly. And then also, I want to give you an update on our online discrimination reporting format. So when we started doing the online discrimination reporting, we started it in 2015 because we received feedback that many residents may be afraid to come to City Hall. They were afraid of their city government. And I thought, okay, we'll do an online discriminating, discrimination reporting format. And we did. This year, I worked with our Out on the Lakeshore leader, Jeffrey Sorenson, to look at our online discrimination format and say, hey, what can we do better? So this is what this work is about. It's not about staying the same, but it's always looking to, what can we do better? So I've covered all of these things already in the previous slides. So I'm just going to go through this slide and I'm going to hand it over to our Human Resources Director, Jennifer Orm.
Thank you, Esther. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So tonight, I really have four key points that I'd like to share with you and, and talk about what we've been doing, what we've accomplished so far, and then what the future looks like with DEI internal with our employees. So to start, I'd like to talk about our recruiting and our hiring process. We've made a few changes. So this past year, I think in October, Veronica Estevez, in the Human Resources Department, she's the HR specialist, she gained, or she joined the West Michigan Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And so we've been posting all city positions on that website, which is a huge improvement. We're hoping, we, we can't say for sure that we've hired anyone from that, that website just yet, but we hope to gain some traction. It's not just our seasonal positions. It's, it's our full and part-time positions. So that's an enhancement. We've also been using other formats to advertise our positions. So we have a really robust applicant tracking system that shoots all of our job ads out to Indeed.com, which is really popular, also to many of the local colleges. But after taking a class at Michigan State University, they brought up a good point, that not everybody's on those sites. And so to really attract a diverse pool of candidates, we need to be more creative. And so we've actually posted a few positions on Craigslist and we've seen some success and traction from that. We've also been doing a lot on social media, so we work with Mary Ann to post positions. And that's really how we can attract a lot of passive candidates that may not even know to look at our website for opportunities. So it's just really a great way to get the word out. You see a lot of people tagging other people on those posts, which is exciting because it really does spread the word and we get a lot of, we get a lot of views. So that's one thing that we've been working on. Another huge undertaking that we've recently taken on is the Higher Reach Program. And it's a Higher Reach Academy. So I think it was actually in January, I had applied on behalf of the city to be included in the Higher Reach Academy for this calendar year. And Higher Reach is an awesome, it's an awesome program. It's been around just for about three years now. But it's evidence-based selection. And so we're looking at ways that we can improve our hiring process, our recruiting process. And we, we really do have a really strong process as it is that I'm very proud of. And I think that our hiring managers do a great job to eliminate bias. But there's a lot of unconscious bias that does occur. And one thing too, that I've learned through this Higher Reach Academy, is not just bias. It can be negative. It can be positive too. You know, you can relate to somebody and say, I really like that candidate. There's just something about them that reminds me of me, you know? Or reminds me of my son or whatever. So it can, it can happen in a positive way too. And so what we're trying to do is just eliminate that bias completely and have it be more evidence-based selection. One other thing that I thought was really interesting was to eliminate the noise from the hiring process. And so I started to really think about that. What is, what does that mean? What is the noise? And it can be that you had a rough morning getting the kids off to school. You didn't have enough coffee. You know, you didn't get a good night's sleep. And so there's all of these factors that can really impact how you're evaluating your candidates, whether it's by looking at their resumes or if it's meeting with them in person. And so we want to eliminate not only that, that unconscious bias, or if it's just bias, but we also like to eliminate that noise from our process. So evidence-based selection is a fair, objective, data-driven strategy that helps organizations make better hiring decisions. It's a proven way to make better hires and it does three things. The three objectives is to reduce first-year turnover. That's when you've hired the wrong person, obviously, or they've, they've joined the wrong organization for them. It also helps you to make better hires. And then it actually increases workplace diversity. So back in 2010, Mercy Health had adopted this strategy. And they were really looking at recruiting, you know, how many days does it take us to fill a position? What's our turnover rate? Let's, let's improve those things. And when they went through the whole process, they actually doubled their diversity with their candidates and with their hires. So it was one of those outcomes that wasn't really expected, but was really positive. So they got a lot of attention. And that's when Michigan Works and Talent 25 said, we want to be a part of this. We want to study what you did. How can we even improve it more? And so they've reached out to different organizations, both public and private sector. City of Grand Rapids has been part of this academy a couple of years ago. Ottawa County, Kent County, Herman Miller, Gordon Foods, the list goes on and on and on. So we applied and we were accepted. So I'm really excited about that. They did have us create a team. And they wanted people that were completely on board and that wanted to see these results and would give it their all. And they wanted people that were in the positions like myself, where you have influence on who's hired for the positions. So myself, Veronica Estevez, in my department, who works with hiring managers every day, and also Esther. So they did say that you need to have somebody that, if you have a designated person in your organization that has a DEI focus, they need to have a seat at this table. So all three of us have joined the academy and it's going really well. We've had a couple of meetings. We have lots of homework. We've been reading books and taking tests online. And it's really been exciting and I'm, I'm really excited to tell you about it. I do have a handout that I'll give to everybody later. But then I encourage you too, to go on the Higher Reach website and just check it out. There's a video and they, they interview Mercy Health, so you can kind of see what that looks like. All right, Esther? Okay, so that's, that's one of my key points. The next one is employee development and training. So Esther talked a little bit about this, but I would like to elaborate and kind of talk about what we've been doing and how it's been going. So DEI know is a huge, huge goal of city council. I appreciate the support that you've given to me and to Keith. And Keith always backing me up to say, yep, we want to develop and train our people and we want this to be a focus. So we have that budget. We've put it to use. So that's the good news. So this past year, we've had two different sessions for employees to participate in a cultural intelligence and unconscious bias class through Ottawa County. Unfortunately, had to be on Zoom, but they did a fantastic job and we had great feedback from the employees that participated. So I believe we did one in October and then we also did one in December. And we're going to continue doing those. So the nice thing about this training is that it's only for local government municipalities. So it's a lot of folks from Ottawa County. There's folks from Grand Haven, Grand Haven City and Township, and then also the City of Holland. And then I also folded BPW in and got them a seat at the table as well. So it's been great because the focus truly is on government. It's on the structures that we have in place. And I'll just kind of read to you a, a quick blurb. The course description is, "As the racial demographics of our country change, how do we ensure that people from all cultural backgrounds have a fair opportunity to participate fully in the life of the community? Participants will gain an understanding of the racial equity framework, explore barriers to inclusion, and gain knowledge and tools to create change." So it's a four-hour training. It's split up because of Zoom onto two, two-hour sessions. And we've had really great success and feedback. People come out of there and their minds are blown. They've learned so much. It's a lot of history and it's a lot, again, based on government. So that's one of the courses that we've had. Another one that I'm really excited to talk about, that will be holding two different sessions. It'll be in May. And it's through a partnership that we form with Grand Valley State University. They have an Inclusion and Equity Institute. And so we reached out to them. I talked to Esther and Esther has some great contacts. So again, you know, we collaborate. We were partners in this, in this work. And she said, let's reach out to Grand Valley. They have a great program. So they are putting together, again, via Zoom for this first session. But they're putting together a class for us. And it's a Trans and Queer 101. It's called Training for Allies course. And it's going to really help our employees to have a better understanding and to, to know certain terms, terminology, because everybody's so afraid, am I going to say the wrong thing? Did I, you know, did I screw this up? So it's open to all of our employees. We're really encouraging people to participate. Marla, the trainer, she's amazing. Esther and I met with her earlier this year and we're just really excited about what that class looks like. It's not a blame shame type of class. It really is to just say, this is a 101. Everything that you need to know, that you probably haven't been comfortable asking questions about. So we're really excited. That's happening in May. All right, Esther, can you switch this slide? All right. My third point, and Esther talked a little bit about this too, is that we would like to create an employee DEI council. And so what that will look like is, we will be sending out a notification, bless you, either later this spring or early summer, to invite all of our employees who would like to have a voice and a seat at the table to be part of this council. And we were very, we were, we did our research. You know, SHRM recommends a diversity council versus a committee or a, you know, a group, a work group. But we just really feel that it's important that we can bring all of the people that are willing and, and want to share their experience as an employee of the city, as a community member, bring them to the table so that we can, we can ask questions. We can figure out, what are our initiatives? Where would we like to go from here? What are something, what are some blind spots that I may have with our HR practices? We can all do better. And so I've already started to reach out to some folks and, and talk to them and try to figure out, okay, you know, would you be interested? Would you be willing? Would you be open to being part of this council? And it's, it's, it's diversity in every way. It's not just about race. It's diversity in every way. And so I've had some really great conversations with our employees and I'm looking forward to having them participate. We can't just focus on recruiting a diverse workforce if we're not inclusive. We have to have a culture of inclusion here at the City of Holland. Because that's where you see that first-year turnover. People come in and if they don't feel that they have a voice or that their voice and their opinions, that they're being respected, they're going to look elsewhere. They're going to leave our organization. And that's a huge loss in a lot of ways. I mean, you can look at it just from a business standpoint. And the investment that we make, onboarding an employee, benefits, training, all of those things. And to lose them within the first year, that's a lot of time and effort on their part and ours. So we really need to look at, how can we change the culture or improve the culture? Because it is, I don't want to take away from it. We do really have a great culture. It's amazing. You talk to our employees and they have wonderful things to say. But we can improve. So that's the point of this, this council. So the invitation will go out. We will, we will get together in person, because it'll be under 25 people. And we will be able to start to develop and implement some processes. And the goal really for this diverse group of employees is to meet on a regular basis to discuss diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace and to make sure that the different voices are being heard, valued, and that they can contribute to the overall DEI goals and actions for our organization. It shouldn't just be the three of us driving all of that. This needs to be a larger body of people, more voices. Now, in anticipation for this, Esther and I have been doing our homework. I've taken a class at Michigan State University. That's where I've picked up a couple of, you know, tidbits here and there. One thing that they did say and that kind of stuck with me, diversity is inviting somebody to a party. Inclusion is asking them to dance. And to me, equity is saying, show me how you like to dance. Teach me. So, you know, looking at this from that model of saying, not just diversity, we need more than that. We need an inclusive culture. Really needs to start by involving people that have diverse backgrounds and perspectives and voices. So Esther and I have both also been participating with the Board of Public Works. They have a DNI work group and they have monthly meetings. And they were kind enough to invite us to those meetings. So we've been sitting in on those meetings and we've learned a lot. It's been interesting to see them kind of walk through their process and, you know, their charter, their vision. And it's given us kind of like a preview and we've learned from that. And then they've also really gathered input from both of us because we've been doing this work for a while in our careers. And so it's been really beneficial. But again, it's those partnerships and collaborating and learning from one another that will make us stronger and will help us to succeed in this area. All right, lastly, employee performance evaluations. And again, Esther mentioned that as well. So measure what matters. You know, that's what we do. We, we measure things like teamwork and we measure things like customer service on our employees' performance evals because all of us serve some customer, whether it's internal, external. So when I think about measuring what matters, diversity, equity, and inclusion matters. And it should be something that we are, we are putting on the annual performance eval so that we can say, not only are we encouraging and are we asking you to be, you know, a participant in this process, but now we're measuring how well you're doing it and how much of it you're doing. So I'm not going to tell you exactly what those goals will look like because quite frankly, I think that that needs to be the Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Council to kind of determine, what should we be measuring? What should it be? Training opportunities? Are they going to the LIDA summit? Are they attending training offerings internally? Are they advocating for other people in the community? So there's a, a whole slew of things that we could measure. But again, I want to wait until we have the, the council formed and then we'll make those decisions and, and roll that out. So it's to get more participation. You know, again, encouraging is one thing, but measuring and, and holding people accountable is another. So we've already begun this important work, but there's always ways that we can do better and we can improve. You know, I was talking to Esther earlier out in the hall and I said, it's, it's really this exercise of pulling together everything that we've all been doing for the last few years and several months and even during the pandemic. It's, it's been refreshing because it's like, wow, we have been doing a lot. And we haven't really celebrated that or told any of you about that. So I appreciate the fact that Keith said, hey, I want you guys to sit in front of council. Tell them what you're working on. Tell them what you're doing. And again, we have the backing of leadership. We have the backing of all of you, the budget. But giving us the reins and saying, do the work, that's what we're asking. And trust and know that we are going to do it and we're going to give it 100%. We don't take this, this assignment lightly. We, we know it's important and it is important in many different aspects, as you can see tonight. So thank you and we just appreciate the opportunity to, to do this work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I am going to talk a little bit about what some of our department teams are already working on so that you can begin to just get a general understanding that it's not just me. It's a whole group of people. Our marketing communications team, Mary Ann is very mindful of our Spanish-speaking community and their needs. She regularly checks in with me when I'm working on different cultural events. She comes to the office and says, hey, how can I promote this for you? So I'm really glad that we have that kind of thoughtfulness and purposefulness in our marketing communications work. She's always looking for those opportunities. And also looking for opportunities to provide organic community representation. Our TV team has often said to me, Esther, how can you make this really happen? We don't want things to be... We don't want things to be kind of set up so it looks one way. But how can we just begin to make this happen regularly? And how can you invite us to the table when you're doing your things? We want to be involved. And these guys have come on weekends to cover stuff that I'm doing in the evening. So again, that takes commitment. Community Neighborhood Services, many of you know that our, our Community Neighborhood Services belongs to the Urban Sustainability Directors Network. What a lot of people don't recognize and it's not often talked about in the community in DEI circles is that sustainability, environmental sustainability is part of diversity, equity and inclusion, just building sustainable practices for the future. So we have been working with West Michigan Sustainability Business Forum. And we did put together some information in Spanish. And we worked with our Holland Board of Public Works to put, to talk about the online billing system. I talked about the home repair program and also talked about the fact that we have opportunities here in our city to provide resources for you to access your government. This department has a large number of bilingual speakers in their community, in their department. So from the receptionists to the inspectors, there's a lot of individuals there that can provide support. And I think also it's very refreshing, I mean, what a wonderful way, what a message you send to your community when people see a person like them at the table. That makes a big difference. And then also I wanted to talk a little bit about our Community Connector. The last, I actually did this in February. And when I spoke to Mark Cornelis, we'd been talking about it for a while of having a Community Connector serving in the Meadow, Meadow Brook Lanes and Harbor Village area. And actually, the, the area that, of service is much larger. It goes from Ottawa all the way out past, past Washington, further out a little bit. And, but we have people, we have a person that's going to be working and serving that area. That's a very vital area because a lot of the students that live at that area attend Jefferson Schools, which is one of the schools that the Community Network for Education has been working with for, I think, like three years now. So I think that this is, this is a good thing. And that's the kind of thinking that our teams do here at the city. Our City Clerk's Office, boy, they are all about accessibility to the voters. Se habla español in each of the polling locations. If there isn't somewhere who speaks Spanish, I've seen individuals run out to a polling location to help support if there is a need. So they do have a backup plan. Spanish voter registrations are available and they are on our website. So if someone goes on our website and wants to access one of those applications, they can, they can get them there or they can come to the office and we can, we can get it for them here. They also, also have election equipment to accommodate persons with disabilities. And we've had this for a while and I'm really proud of that because it's important for everyone to have accessibility to government and, and to vote. Our Finance and Assessors Department, tax bills. Did you know, and I don't know if you pay attention, but when you get your tax bill, there is a number there that our residents can reach out to if they need assistance in Spanish. I think that that's a wonderful way to be inclusive of the community that you serve and recognize who it is that you serve. We also have provided translation services for board of review and public safety documents. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of support there. Also, again, we want to move away from things that are required. Required, we want to, we don't want to just be in compliance. We want to go above and beyond. But the fact is that for Title VI monies for, that we receive from the Michigan Department of Transportation, we do have to have a purchasing agreement clause that says that we will work and we encourage our minority business owned partners to work with the city. And I know that there's going to be more happening there. Recently, we joined MITN Purchasing Group so that many other partners in the community that might want to bid on our projects have visibility to our work. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Holland Public Safety and probably the most recent update that I would like to share with you is that Chief Messer, when we started working on the Steering Committee, we had two extra spots. And I really felt that it was important for us to have someone from our Public Safety Department represented on that Steering Committee. It, it's just vital to have our Public Safety Department at the table when we do this work. And I talked to Robin about it at Ottawa County and she, she agreed. And we scheduled a meeting with Sheriff Kemker and Chief Messer here at City Hall to talk about, hey, we'd like you to be at the table. And they wanted to know, what does that mean? We're really, you know, strapped for resources and what time of, time commitment that, does that mean? What are you doing? What does that mean? We talked to them about it. They thought about it. I'm not sure where Sheriff Kemker is, but I'm pretty sure that either he or undersheriff Weiss will be part of that team. But Chief Messer, when I spoke at that meeting, he said, I don't know that I can do it because I just don't have the capacity. But if I can't do it, one of my captains will be there at the table. And this week, he reached out to me and said, Esther, send me all the dates. I'm going to try to, try, I want to be at that table. So I think it's important for us to include our Public Safety Department in these conversations as we move the work forward. It can seem a little threatening. This work is a little threatening for many of us. Sometimes we walk into the room and it's like, ooh, it's going to happen today. But I think it takes great courage to just walk in and just sit at the table, listen. We can always do better and we can learn from others and how they do their work. So I'm really, I'm going to just skip through the rest of this because that's the most important thing that's happened to me personally. Just being involved in that was, is exciting. I do want to point out something as, as Captain or Chief Messer mentioned to me. This fair and impartial police training, when they started this, I was at that table. They invited me to go through the training when they did it the very first time. And I am pleased to say that they have more certified trainers at the Police Department. They actually are doing this regularly. They're doing refreshers for all the public safety staff. And also it's part of the onboarding process for new officers. And then he, just because of different things that have been happening nationally, you know, I asked him the other day, I'm like, what, how do you screen out your candidates to make sure that you're getting individuals that are committed to the work? And, you know, you follow the regular practices that you do when you do the, the background screens. But he said, you know, we do pay attention to social media and interviews with their neighbors and people that, that they know because we want to make sure that whoever we bring onboard is going to be the right fit and that they will serve the position honorably. So for DEI training, for, since I've been here and we've been doing the LIDA training as well as the Diversity Forum, most recently in Ottawa County that we started doing, our Public Safety Department, our community policing officers go to these events every time we have them. So Chief Messer tries to have, and he does actually have representation at the table, on boards, on their boards or their commissions, at the Latin Americans United for Progress, Heights of Hope, Midtown Counseling, Boys and Girls Club. He also has an officer representative on the reentry program here in the community. So just again, trying to just build those relationships in the community. He and Sheriff Kemker are working with the community mental health. Again, they recognize that when they are called out to different calls that they're dealing with mental health issues within a home. So just again, trying to figure out what, how do we, what's the best path forward? So I'm not going to talk too much about the community policing model because I know you know what they've been doing. I put some links there of some of the work that they are doing at the Holland Middle School. So watch it at your leisure. The Holland Fire Department, there couldn't be a more, a more genuine group dedicated to wanting to know their community. Captain Tenny has been coming to me probably in the last year, actually even before that, but more regularly this year, saying, Esther, how can we be that fire department that goes out there and removes barriers? Oftentimes, people are afraid to say whether they live in a house or they don't live in a house. They're afraid to ask for resources. They don't want to get medical treatment for a variety of reasons. So hopefully by the end of this year, we will have some informational resource cards to share to victims, with victims of fire. And also I think that this will also become very beneficial for our Public Safety Department as well when they go out to calls. And then our hope is that we will be able to do fire safety, public safety announcements on our Spanish speaking stations, just general information that we all really should hear. And I think sometimes the Spanish community doesn't always get those messages. And I was really impressed because he's like, we want to understand more about immigration. What, what are the dynamics there? We want to understand the cycle of poverty because we go to homes that, where there is a lot of poverty. How do we begin to understand what their needs might be? And certainly that's an opportunity for not just the fire department, but for our City Hall staff, our Public Safety Department, all of us. Again, building a culture of learning. Oh dear. Zoom, I really zoomed through that. So now, now it's my pleasure to have Kara start up her, her presentation. And I just want you to take a moment to observe all of her photographs. And I'm going to put it on the first slide. Wonderful. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Box, members of council. I'm really excited to have the opportunity to be here. And especially as we, before this presentation, talked about visions for downtown and growth and opportunity. And it ties so well into our discussions about DEI in downtown Holland. But as Esther said, this work is ongoing. And it's not something that you check three boxes and yep, we're done, we're diverse. Let's move on to the next thing. And I think that our journey in downtown Holland as an organization, but both personally as the person in the department that's kind of leading this effort, I think is really telling. And we're at a really exciting point here in March of 2021 and ready to make some big, bold moves. But I think in order to understand how we got there, I kind of want to just walk you along with how we got started because we didn't just sit at a board meeting one day and say, hey, let's focus on DEI. It really was a journey of learning and listening and outreach to how we got there. And actually was at a downtown annual meeting where we present our budgets to our stakeholders and talk about upcoming events. And Councilman Garcia joined us. And I'll, I tell this story a lot, but I'll never forget it. And at the, we asked her questions at the end and he raises his hand and said, well, what are you doing about the fact that minorities don't feel welcome downtown? And then we just kind of sat there because we weren't doing anything about it. So at a subsequent board meeting, a board member said, yeah, what are we doing about that? And so we decided we really needed to dive into this. So we held a town hall meeting and we invited a lot of BIPOC leaders in our community, members of the LGBTQ plus community. And we posed some bold questions to them, you know, does downtown Holland have a diversity problem? What are we doing well? What are we not doing well? And it was a very humbling moment for me to sit up there and be told, you're not doing very, you're not doing very well at all and you've got a major problem. And I think no one had ever taken that time to listen and ask and get feedback from the community. And I really give a lot of credit to our downtown board because they didn't shy away from that. They were very bold in saying, we have a diversity, equity and inclusion problem in downtown Holland and we're going to try to address this. And they've been very bold in saying that and in admitting that there is a problem, which is not easy to do. No one wants to look and say, you know, we're not doing this well and we've got huge portions of our community that don't feel welcome in downtown Holland. It's the heart of Holland where we, you know, no one wants to hear that. So I really do give a lot of credit to our board in not shying away from admitting that there was a problem. So after that, we decided to adopt language in our strategic plan that we have a goal of ensuring that all visitors and all members of our community feel invited, welcomed and engaged in downtown Holland. So we have about an eight-point strategic plan that outlines all of our goals for how we promote downtown Holland and we adopted this language in 2018. In 2018, we also asked a representative from the Lake Shore Ethnic Diversity Alliance to join our ex officio board, along with community members that, from, or excuse me, community leaders from Chillicothe and the Chamber also sit on that board. So the next steps in 2019, sorry, I'm got a little, we can, yep, 2019, were really about listening and learning. And so I really went out into the community and asked to meet with people to say, hey, we, we know we have this issue downtown and we want to be better. And tell me about your experience. Tell me about you, how you feel about downtown Holland and what can we do to be better? So I just want to kind of, you know, I met with Lake Shore Advantage. I met with leaders from Laup, with LIDA, with Local First, with the Mixed Roots Collective out of Grand Rapids, Out on the Lake Shore, Urban Core Collective. We met with West Coast Chamber, West Michigan Hispanic Chamber. And really just listening. And in that, we, it was just a humbling experience personally to listen and not react and not try to defend yourself and to really just have an open mind and an open heart to help members of our community are feeling. So then we really tried to sort of do some more outreach in 2019. We held our Big Give Charity Shopping Event that last, that year. And among the nonprofits that we selected to benefit from that event, we chose Escape Ministries and Lighthouse Immigrant Advocates and Out on the Lake Shore. We were a sponsor of the Holland Pride Festival that year. And we had a booth at the, at the festival and added the brochure. And so many people at that event came up to say, thanks for being here. I appreciate you being here. And I think people were really surprised to see us here. And it was just such a great experience. I sat at the booth all day and it was just a great experience to be out there. We organized concerts in the park that year where we had a different lunchtime concert in GDK Park. And our vision was really to celebrate the sounds of Holland and we invited a really diverse array of performers. We helped sponsor Laup's annual dinner as part of the city's table and had a presence there. At that meeting, the then executive director talked about how he and I had met and we had a great vision for some new events we were going to bring to the Street Performer Series. And I was really surprised. Here he is with all his stakeholders and all his fundraisers. And he was talking about how meaningful that was to him. I sat on the committee for Esther's International Festival that year as well. And then I also attended a lot of trainings. So any opportunities that were afforded to me, from trainings with LIDA to Ottawa County, West Coast Chamber, I tried to take advantage of all the learning opportunities that were available and encouraged my board to do the same. And then 2020 struck and I think it kind of knocked everyone off their feet. And for so many months, we were just trying to focus on keeping our downtown business owners, you know, in business. And, and I think it's kind of took a backseat a little bit with our diversity efforts until the murder of George Floyd. And then we, I think we kind of were starting to come out of the fog and realizing, wait, this work is still necessary and we can't put it on the back burner. And so following the city's lead, we issued a statement on behalf of downtown Holland, letting people know about the strategic plan language and letting people know that we're really dedicated to ensuring that everyone feels welcome. I continued to attend trainings with LIDA and with Ottawa County. I attended the training that Jen spoke about, about the cultural intelligence. And it was really great. It was probably one of the best trainings I'd been to, and I've been to quite a few. When, obviously Ottawa County hired Robin and she and I connected and I invited her to join our DEI subcommittee that we had, that had kind of fallen by the wayside. But with her help, we really formalized that committee in late 20, late 2020. And she joined our committee and so did Linda Hart, the exec, the new executive director of the Holland Visitors Bureau. Because she's really interested in growing in this effort too. So we decided we, to establish a regular meeting schedule. We now meet the first Tuesday of every month at eight o'clock in the morning. We're posting our agendas and minutes using the city's iCompass system because we really want to make our meetings open to the public and we really want to be transparent in our efforts. And Robin has really helped us sort of think more strategically. Where before we were kind of meeting and saying, well, we could do this, or we could do this, or hey, did you hear about this training? But she's really been great in helping us sort of focus on some more strategic goals. And as part of that too, we, in 2019, had put aside funds to do a big community event in the summer of 2020 that was gonna celebrate Holland's diversity. And clearly, with COVID, we couldn't do that. So instead, we did a virtual DEI Day event. We started making plans for that, working with Jennifer Pasqua, who was a former anchor at WZM and now owns a multimedia company called Halo Halo Multimedia with her son. And so we started talking about, well, what can we do instead of a big event where we're gathering thousands of people together? And we held that event in January of this year, January 18, which is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And we ended up hosting two panel discussions. One with, in the morning with community leaders that work in the field of DEI. So LIDA joined us and Jeff Sorenson from Out on the Lake Shore and Esther was there. And we really just made it very publicly known that we recognize that downtown Holland has a diversity issue and that we're, want to work on it, that we want to be better. And we talked a lot about what issues face businesses and how businesses can be better. And it's really the first time that we put it out there to the public. And we even had some members of our DEI subcommittee that were, you know, maybe we shouldn't do this, we don't have a plan, we don't have answers. But I was really, felt it was important to make the process more public and to recognize publicly that we have an issue. And we heard it from a lot of people that really appreciated that effort. In the afternoon, we hosted another panel discussion with leaders from Holland Museum and Herick District Library and our own Holland Farmers Market to talk about DEI. And then we shared some pre-recorded interviews with some businesses, including Cake Bakery and Francis J., New Holland Brewing, our brewing company, to really talk about why DEI matters to them and to their businesses. So that was a really, you know, great event that we could do within our, our safety perimeters. And that was in January. Since then, we've, we've made a lot of great progress, even this year, that I'm excited to talk about looking forward. We had a donor that approached one of our business owners and said, well, I really want to support this effort in downtown Holland. How can I do that? And I said, well, yeah, of course. Well, we'd love to take your money. So we, I worked with the finance department and we established a DEI donor fund for downtown Holland that is separate from our PSD fund, where those funds will be used specifically for DEI efforts. And anyone that donates to that fund can be assured that, you know, they're not paying to promote sidewalk sales, for instance, that those, those funds will be used for DEI initiatives. And I'm really excited to say that we've already received a $2,000 donation for that fund. And we're looking forward to really growing that and using those funds in a, in a way to make progress downtown. I'm also excited to share that the PSD Board approved $10,000 in our FY22 budget to use for expenses related to DEI. And I think this is really significant because as I was doing all this outreach with leaders in the community and BIPOC members of the community, everyone sort of shared this message that if you're gonna ask for people to share their stories or ask for people to revisit trauma they've been through so that you can learn from it, if you're gonna engage with DEI experts, that you really need to compensate them accordingly and value their time, which has just always really struck with me. And people would say, well, how much money do you have set aside for this? And I couldn't, I said, well, nothing really, you know. And so I was really excited that the board really took that to heart in discussing our FY22 budget. And we're actually starting out on the process of hiring a DEI consultant specifically for downtown Holland. And looking at our strategic goals and working with Robin, we're sort of realizing that we, there's a lot we don't know. And with a small staff in downtown Holland and an all-volunteer board, we really need assistance of an expert sort of working in this field. So we expect that we'll be using that $10,000 to hire that consultant. And actually, at our April board meeting, I'll be bringing a draft proposal to, with the DEI Subcommittee and the PSD Board so that we can start sending that proposal out and getting some feedback. So we're really hoping that hiring this consultant and spending this money towards hiring a consultant will help us gather data. Esther talked about that too, how really you need to base things in data. So we're looking to someone that can help us gain data about current attitudes towards downtown Holland that are being held by our BIPOC members of our community, our LGBTQ plus members of the community, working with our property owners and our business organizations in the town to examine how we can increase minority business ownership in downtown Holland. Because we know, we hear again and again, that representation matters. And I think we currently have three minority-owned businesses downtown Holland. And we really want to kind of make that process of becoming a downtown business owner more transparent. How does that work? How do you find out what properties are available? What, what do you need in order to start a business downtown? We really want to make the business case for DEI in downtown Holland. As a board, you know, we know that as our community changes, we can't afford for people to not feel welcome downtown Holland. We're always competing against the internet and everyone's like, we've always got to figure out how to solve, you know, the issue of community about Amazon. Well, we need to grow our market share and we need to ensure that everyone wants to come spend their money downtown Holland. So we're really gonna be asking the consultant to help us make that business case because we really feel that it's vital for downtown Holland to continue to be successful in the future. And then we also want to provide training opportunities for our business owners on topics like implicit bias, fear hiring practices, recruitment. Because, you know, they're the face of downtown Holland. And if, it was, I'll never forget it too, I was meeting with someone from the Irving Court Collective. And he was Puerto Rican and we met at Ferris Coffee. And before he came in, he had stopped in a couple stores with a hoodie on and told me right there, oh, I was just followed in three of your stores downtown. So here I am, trying to tell him how we want to be more diverse and more welcoming, and it's really important to us. And right there was an example of how much work we had to do. So we really want to get all of our downtown Holland business owners on board because we recognize that they're really the face of downtown. So we're really excited about having Robin and Esther join our committee and helping us think more strategically and really hoping to make some good strides towards our DEI efforts, but, and continue on the journey. So it's, I think it's really good to reflect on how far you've come and realize that, wow, we really have taken some great steps, but we have a lot of work to do too.
Great.
Thank you, Cara. And I applaud Cara for the work that she's been doing in downtown Holland. It is a hard area to really think strategically about going forward, but we do know that our demographics are changing and we need to gain market share for our downtown so they can continue to prosper. So what's next? I've talked about this transformative work early, from city council down to part-time employee, everyone. We are in the business this coming year of building a culture of learning and not being afraid to look and address some of those issues that make us nervous. We have to go, we have to run toward this work boldly. Sometimes you want to run and hide, but this is one of those times. We need to run toward the danger, what we perceive as danger. And I think when we get there, we're gonna recognize that it's gonna open opportunities, it's gonna make us better. And it's gonna give us a different lens to look at the world with, that we, in the community that we serve. So again, we can't do this by ourselves. We are bringing a group of people alongside us, and that is the benefit of working with a government alliance on race, on equity, and that, that framework. So where are we now, the GARE team? So today, we worked with the purchasing department to kind of look at the final document, finalizing that document for scope of work for our pre-work that we're gonna start here in our community. Tomorrow morning, I'll be looking at that, probably, I'm thinking 90% draft, so I'm excited about that. We're gonna go through that pre-work with our learning circles of practice from the different communities. And then we're gonna go through a pre-work area where GARE will work with us for about six to nine months. Robin thinks it might actually be a year. I'm hoping it's six to nine months so that we can begin to do more work here. But I don't want you to worry that work isn't gonna be happening here. So again, the work is normalized, organized. Our final goal is to begin to implement the tools that are just intuitive as we do our work. It won't, it won't require extra work because it'll be part of our culture and how we do our work. Oops. We're almost done. So what's next? So one of the big initiatives that I wanted to do last year but ran out of time and actually because of COVID, a lot of things got, we did a lot, but there were some things that we couldn't really move forward. But we're gonna begin our training with a racial equity impact analysis. So as we do this board and commission training, I think it's important that our board, new boards and commissioners understand what that means when you do your work. It's not just going in and sitting on a board and commission, but actually looking at the demographics of the people that you serve. What are the pending needs of the community? Looking at those ALICE reports and trying to have a greater understanding of the communities that may not have a voice at the table, that we should really take into consideration as we make big decisions. So I hope that as we get through this pre-work, that we might even be able to start doing our audits internally. And I hope that when we finish up this work by next year, I hope that we will be able to come back each department with at least two initiatives. And I'm setting the cap at two, but I know there'll probably be a lot more from each department. But I think it's important for us that whatever we do, that we're really thoughtful and that it's something that we can achieve and that we've brought the right people to the table as we develop these goals. And that we begin to understand, if we do this, who benefits and whose burden? And how do we mitigate the consequences of our decisions? And then continue to measure. If we don't, if we're not measuring, how can we know if we're going in the right direction? This is gonna be really important work and I, I am really excited about getting started on that. So here's just all the boards and commissions I hope we can get to. And then I have these slides a little mixed up. But in any event, we want to prepare our future leaders. We want to begin to say to our boards and commissions, before you even commit to a board or commission, we want you to come to two meetings to make sure it's the right fit for you and that you're gonna be there to do the work. We want you to meet with your city liaison before you even come to a meeting and to understand what are the requirements to be a board or a commissioner, to be a good one. And then I think we all recognize that board and commission training as we go forward with diversity, equity, and inclusion work, that we are training them and giving them those opportunities to learn. Learning is a very important part of, of this work, continuous learning. So I'm gonna pass through this and I just want to thank city council. I've never been so excited to be a part of our city, to have the support of our city council and to have the support of my city manager and to work with a wonderful group of people and the rest of our team at City Hall. They're all very committed and want to have an opportunity to be a part of this journey that we're on. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council members, comments? Yeah, Dave.
Wow. That was a lot of stuff.
I'm sorry, I tried to.
No, no. It was a lot of stuff, but it was one of the most enjoyable, elongated presentations, I think. First of all, to all three of you, thank you so much for your passion and investment in this. And just a couple of comments. I think I heard probably from all three of you, whether it was through some kind of measured means or some aha moments, just acknowledging what the reality is, the fact that, you know, we're maybe not as, as cool as we thought we were or as inclusive as we thought, just to recognize that there's a challenge is a major primary step to taking any, making any other progress. And I've heard all three of you acknowledge that. And it's, it's just an awesome thing to, to witness and to hear. So thank you for doing that too. A lot of things going through my head. The only thing I would mention, I guess, at this point is that for an average citizen's point of view, I don't think probably unless they're part of a board or integrated into the process on here, they're privy to seeing all of these efforts going on. It's easy to recognize a problem or when something goes wrong, but to understand the difficult and ongoing work as you just adequately just described it, doesn't often get seen. I don't know how we would do it necessarily, but the more that we can get this story out to the public and help them understand what their city government, what their city business, you know, what the leadership in general of this, of this community is trying to do and working toward, I think would help people understand probably better what the reality is. And maybe make your jobs a little easier. But help us all move forward as we're trying to move those needles toward a better future, so. However we can do that, I encourage us to do that. But thank you so much for all of your work and attention to this. It was, it was very cool here.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Others? I, yeah, Lynn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. They were all. The, no, I mean, I think you, Dave, took out those, those words right out of my mouth. I would have been just as eloquent. No, I want, just to, I mean, to reiterate, I think the, you know, the reality of the work that's, that's going into this. And it is, it does have to be intentional work. I mean, I, I think even to your point, Esther, of, you know, when, when you walk into a space and finally see somebody who looks like you, right, the, kind of the, the feeling that you get, right, of, of belonging in that space. And I think that's human nature and I think that's part of the issue where we gravitate towards those that are like us, right? And when we have that pool of people, I mean, we often don't see the other. And, and so without being intentional in this work to include the other, it just, it doesn't naturally happen. I mean, you have to kind of fight against the grain for that. But on the other side, I know, you know, and strongly believe with all my core that there's a richness that won't otherwise be experienced unless you, you dive into that effort. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for listening. And thank you, council, for all your support in, in making this happen. Because again, doesn't, doesn't happen by accidents, accident, and has to, has to be intentional.
Thanks, Raul. Yeah, Scott. And then Lynn.
Yeah, so this is not a topic I'm comfortable in, in at all. So I appreciate the analogy you provided. Uh, party, dance, teach. That's wonderful. Um, I'm in the dance phase, I think, um, and I'm stepping on toes, so. It will take a little while, but either, either way, one thing I found absent, and maybe it wasn't intentional, um, in this process, but I, I do, I do represent a large number of people in Ward Five in Alleghen County. And when we speak about working with law enforcement, health department, who does a lot of things with housing and businesses, um, we share a economic development office between the two counties. So we participate in that process as well. We have a number of schools in Alleghen County. I, I just, I heard, I didn't hear one word about Alleghen County. Uh, what, what is that? I know that there was a start or beginning with Ottawa County, right? There was some leadership there in, in this area. And Granite, then they invited us to the, the party, right? Now we're dancing. Maybe we're ahead of, you know, maybe we're starting to teach, but maybe we have a responsibility to reach out further. So hopefully, um, we'll get to that point, and we'll reach out intentionally, reach out a little bit more often, more off, uh, to see. I can say Alleghen County is different in that it had unique communities. And, um, some of you live in those communities. Uh, we have a huge Latino population, um, underserved population as well. We have a, a very diverse community in, in parts of the west part of our county as well. So, um, these are wonderful people. They are, they really are. And we've learned a lot over the years, and there's some things we can share. Maybe we don't have the specific, um, programming that all of you have in this county, um, to the north, uh, but we certainly have experiences to share. And I think sometimes the experiences, sometimes far away, what theoretically is written in books and documents and papers and organizations. Sometimes, uh, working with people and living with people is probably more important oftentimes to understand each other. We need to understand each other. That's the important part here. I come from a different background, several different backgrounds. My, where, I'm not just sitting here as a council member, but diversity includes a lot of people, and I don't want to forget that. I don't want to be writing or interpreting any of our programming or documentation just for the Latino community. There's others out there. And so we need to just, I can hear it even in our own voices as we're speaking and as we're talking. We tend to target certain groups or individuals, and I think we need to be more broad when we talk about that. So I guess, I hope we're more intentional reaching out not only to Ottawa and sharing in some of the communities to our north, but certainly to the south as well. So, but thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
If I may respond. So, um, I just want to tell you, and I was afraid that was going to happen, um, when I started talking about the literature. One of the, one of the difficulties with, um, with the information that we have is we, because of time, money, uh, we look at our demographic information, and sometimes we target those areas where we have a greater representation. And, and I see where you're coming from, and it's not something that we take lightly. It's just there's so much to do, and we have to, we have to focus somewhere. But I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm going to be mindful of that and find better strategies to work, um, with all of our communities. And I think we, we really, we really try. Um, but it's, it's difficult. The capacity is just not there to do everything, but we're, we're looking at numbers, at statistics, at demographics. And, um, with respect to reaching out to Alleghen County, I think oftentimes, because we work in Holland, we just, I know that Alleghen County starts at Thirty Second Street. For me, as a city employee, that makes no difference to me. I'm going to serve you if you live on the other side of, of Thirty Second Street. But I, I forget that, you're correct, Blue Star Elementary, I think, where my son went to elementary school. It's in Hamilton, but I think it's considered part of the city of Holland. Um, and I know that we have that Fillmore area, what, east of Holland. So there's just so much work to do, so much work to do. And I think as far as it goes with working with Alleghen County, is that something that our Ottawa County would, or can I just reach out? I mean, I have reached out to you for different personal reasons because I live in Alleghen County to find out, hey, how can I get resources for my underserved community that I live in? So that's a conversation for another day.
Yeah, I think it's a conversation for another day, but I, I just want to, would say that it doesn't matter what Sheriff Kemker will do, uh, but it's important what Sheriff Baker will do. And so if, if their officers are responding into Alleghen County, which they have jurisdiction, we, we want to partner with them. We want them to understand what we're doing here too, right? Same with public health. There are, um, there are quite a few actually minority-run businesses that's out to Thirty Second Street in Alleghen County. And not just Latinos. So there are a number of them running and operating, and so I just think we need to be intentional, I guess. To make sure we make the effort, and if, after we make the effort, that's great. We, we, we leave it where it's at. But I guess I just want to make sure that we're, we're, you know, stepping on the right toes.
We, we hear you, Scott. I mean, I'm just going to name somewhat the obvious in that we have a dance partner that in a lot of ways invited us to the dance because Ottawa County made that investment. So, so part of it is you're going to hear Ottawa County more than you are Alleghen because they, they've invested the resources and they're the partner, and quite frankly, we're taking advantage of some of the resources that they have available. But you're absolutely right, and, and that's why we're doing some of these leadership circles that right now includes other Ottawa County organism, Ottawa County municipalities because they're under that umbrella, right? But we're also doing that in partnerships with others because we see those circles getting larger. And that's what I hear you saying, and I agree with you. And then I was also just going to say, you know, especially when I heard Jen talking. I'm just going to tell you, we have diversity in pretty much all the forms that you can think of, you know, in our workforce. And that's something that we talk about and that we measure and that we interact with, and um, I don't think we'll get into the details here or anything, but Jen talks about, and we have those interactions where, um, we still have work to do, but yet we, we hear great stories all the time about people that have been in or are joining our organization and have good feedback for us also about the culture that we've been creating and that we continue to want to create. And that is, Scott, like, that's in all the forms. Because I know you've been a voice, and we've definitely heard that and recognized that, that diversity is, it's a lot of different things, right? So, so we hear you.
Lynn.
Well, and the challenge is also that the PSD in particular is really just Eighth Street. Isn't that, is that, my understa, do I get that correctly?
Yeah, just Eight Street. It's, it's a, our, we used to be boundaries run from Mr. Kozak to the City Center and then beyond. So yeah, it is just a, um, a limited, oh, sorry.
A limited area of businesses that we focus on, but we're also only funded by those organizations. So we're not funded by the general fund. It's the businesses that are within our boundaries that are, are paying for these efforts.
So what I was going to say, well, first of all, I've never, you all are so excited about doing such incredibly hard work. It's really, it's so great to see how excited you are about that, and it's just really wonderful work you're doing. And, and I kind of see a connection between the first presentation and this one. And, and what a great opportunity there, you're, you know, we have all these plans for, for the, for the window on the waterfront, and we want to make sure that we do like what, what Ryan was saying, which, but you know, if we build it, they'll come. But we want to make sure that we can, that we actually draw a broad base of people to those, to those opportunities. And, and so what a great ti, what great timing to, to really keep, be doing that kind of work.
Lynn, I'm so glad you mentioned that because we have those discussions all the time. The two presentations that we made tonight are absolutely complimentary. Absolutely are complimentary. Um, if you ever get a chance, and it's the cutest thing you've ever seen, if you ever see that ODC preschool population that walks around that everyone's wanting to adopt, um, you know, that's a great picture of our community. So I won't say anything else, then I'm glad you picked that up and mentioned that, Lynn, because I, I absolutely agree.
Also, Jen, when, Jennifer, when you figure out what you, how you're going to measure what matters, I'd love to know how you're going to, because I had that down, like, oh, I'm so, I'm going to learn how to do that, so you let me know.
That's why I'm going to rely on a, a wide group of, of individuals to come up with those, those, um, measurements. Because really, I can't set those goals on my own, and, um, it needs to be something that we, as a group, as a council, can put together and, and then measure.
Yeah, that'll be really interesting. Thanks.
So I want to go back to something that you said, Lynn, about, hey, making that connection between the first presentation and, and this presentation. And that's what this work is about, this GARE work. It's like, as we go, I picture this as being as we develop our two priorities for each, each, um, department. I, I picture this as working with these groups and saying, okay, asking the difficult questions, and then beginning to build that framework. And I think that you as a city council will see the outcomes of that work, and it'll be reflected in exactly what you're saying as we engage the work. We'll see it in the outcomes of what we're bringing to you. And at the same point, as Scott pointed out earlier, you can be the, the lens that says, well, you didn't do enough work in this area. So holding us accountable as well.
That, that ties directly into what I was, I was going to ask and suggest as well. This is, this is continuous improvement for staff. This is continuous improvement for the community. It needs to be continuous improvement for us as well. Um, and so where opportunities are available for us to be involved in learnings and training, um, please, uh, let us know whether that's through the Friday communication or other ways. Yep, we're all busy people up here, but, but this is important for us to do that continuous improvement and for our eyes to be open and recognize those things so that when a project is brought to us that, Esther, we've got that, we have the ability to be able to say, we don't think you're doing enough work here. And if we have, if we haven't had the training ourselves, if we haven't had the learnings ourselves, we're not going to be, uh, informed enough to be able to recognize that. And so please help us with that as well.
Yep. We should have it done before it comes to you, but as community, uh, learnings of practice, as we do our work, we're bringing that, we're training the trainer. We're going to come back and train everybody else how to do it, including.
That, that's exactly what I'm hoping for.
All part of that team. And I hope to come back again in a couple of months to give you an update. I know we're running out of time.
Probably not a couple of months.
Anyone else? Yeah, Raul.
So I do have a, a comment that may be other business, but I'm looking at the clock and trying to figure that out. Um, but, um, what was I going to say? Something was going to segue me into that, and that, that left. Anyways. So, uh, yeah, if this is a time for other business, I, we're going to transition here. I mean, I can wait until then, but it does, um, I mean, it does kind of tie into what we've been discussing. So I might just go for it.
Yeah, please go for it.
Yeah. But the, uh, yeah, it's like I said, I, I wasn't planning on, on bringing this up tonight, uh, sharing that, but I, but I wanted to share it with, you know, my, my fellow council, uh, people. But certainly to the public, and that is, uh, the, uh, the April twentieth deadline for petitions and applications for city council, right? And the various positions is coming up. And I have made a decision that I will not be on the ballot this fall. But, and I, and I say that this is important, you know, trying to figure out when's the right time to say that. Uh, I want to do the process justice because I think the role that I've been able to play is, is a significant one, you know, from my perspective. I think there's some, you know, things I've been able to contribute. Maybe even towards the end of most meetings, but, um, yeah, I, I, I want to open up the process, I think, for that to be, to continue to be the case for somebody else. I think there are perspectives that are valuable around, I mean, all of ours, perspectives are valuable. And it, uh, I wanted to ensure to the best of my ability that, uh, that continues to be the case for this particular seat. Anyways. Yeah. And I mean, there's still, you know, months, months ahead. This, this term doesn't end at April twentieth, which I'm excited about, you know, I'm ready to hit, to continue to hit things hard, uh, and press, press, uh, pretty firmly on the things that I value, uh, in this role. But I think the reality is, you know, four years later, things, uh, the circumstances around my life have shifted. You know, I've got a one-year-old who's exploring the world, and, you know, I want to be present for him. I've got a six-year-old who's now exploring sports and, you know, after-school programs, and I want to be present for her. I've got a fifteen-year-old who's a sophomore who in two years will be potentially out of the house. And so I want to be able to invest my time, uh, in his life as well, and then just my wife holding down the fort. And I want to have the opportunity to show her my love and appreciation, uh, over these last four years. But fortunately, you know, I'm, I'm part of an organization that you're not going to hear the last of anytime soon. So, uh, so I'll be around quite a bit, uh, and it's in my nature, I think, to be involved in these, these various circles. So I'm not going away in, uh, in that capacity. But, um, yeah, so that's kind of a public announcement, right, uh, for anybody who's interested in an invitation, you know, from the third ward, uh, to gather that paperwork and, and put those petitions in. I, I do find comfort certainly in that, uh, I've had a couple of conversations with people who, who are interested that I think would be excellent candidates and, you know, I think check the boxes. So we'll, uh, yeah, we'll see how this plays out, but, well, it'll be exciting.
Well, Raul, I think I could probably speak for all of us sitting around the desk. We hate to see you go, but we are going to get every drop we can out of you over the course of the next six months. And we're, and, and I don't think any of us is going to be happy if we don't see your face around here quite a bit, whether it's uh, coming and presenting here at council, talking about what's going on at Habitat, or plugging you in a, in a board or commission role somewhere along the line.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? I think we've moved officially on to other business, so. None there. Uh, otherwise, I just have one quick thing to say before, uh, we adjourn, and that is uh, we do not have a meeting scheduled for next week because it is a fifth Wednesday of the month. Uh, we do not have a meeting scheduled for the following Wednesday, which is April seventh, because that is our traditional annual many-people-leave-town-for-spring-break, uh, week, and we will be back here on Wednesday, April fourteenth. Uh, so take a well-deserved break, uh, and we will be back here in three weeks. That seems like an awfully long time. It does. Mr. Van Beek, anything else from you?
Yeah, and just a reminder, we're going to double, we're going to hit you back-to-back then because the fourteenth is a council meeting that quite frankly, we try to keep light on the regular agenda because then we transition right into the first of two nights back-to-back, the fourteenth and then the fifteenth on budget review session. And you will be getting information and communications from, uh, my office, but also directly from the finance office as we release first to you a budget in brief document for April one, but then give you the full budget documents. And I'll just let you know, you know, we're going to target obviously worst-case scenario. I think what, it's April nine, that Friday before the fourteenth. But our intention fully is that we'll get out to you documents earlier on in that week. And I think one thing that, you know, last, last year was the, the year of opportunity and like, hey, because of necessity, we did some things a little bit differently. And I think one of the things that I got positive feedback from all of you about is that when we were doing the budget review sessions, and we got the documents out to you earlier, and that if any of you had questions, that you just funneled them to us ahead of time. And then when we went through the budgets with the department heads, you can always ask questions on the spot. You can always have the discussion. But if you have a question ahead of time, just send them to us, and then we'll make that part of our presentation, then we'll answer it for the benefit of everybody. So you'll see that when we're giving you information in the coming weeks in preparation for that budget review, um, we'll kind of set you up for that and remind you of that. So you'll get the documents, but we'll also prompt you where if, if, as you're going through, you have questions, just send them to us, and then we'll answer them for the benefit of everybody.
Great. Thanks. Anything else from anyone? Otherwise, we are adjourned. We'll see you all in three weeks. Thank you, everyone.